The Planning Commission. For November 7th, would everybody please join me with a pledge of allegiance? Dan?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, could we have roll call, please?
Paul O'Levis.
Here.
Charles Reno.
Here.
Dagny Stapleton.
Here.
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Okay. Commissioner O'Levis?
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner O'Levis, I'm actually going to need to excuse myself from meeting for family emergency, however, I spoke to the city attorney and I do have a disclosure to make and he'd like me to ask me to attend and to put the disclosure on the record.
Please do.
Actually, I'm the chief financial officer of Jensen Precast, a local manufacturer, supplier to the construction industry, and we will be bidding on the project for the southeast connector. As such, the city attorney has advised me to recuse myself from voting on the project.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the record, there's a memo prepared on this matter and it's been submitted to the clerk for inclusion into the record.
The next thing is public comments. These items are for either general public comments or for public comments on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item on the request to speak form and when that item comes up, you'll have three minutes to speak if there's anybody that would like to just make a public comment. Seeing, hearing none, I'll close public comments. I'd like approval of minutes for October 2nd, 2013.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Five to zero. I'd like also approval of minutes for October 16th, 2013.
So moved.
Commissioner Weiskie, second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against?
I was absent for that one, I believe. I have to abstain.
So one abstain and four approval. City Council, lazy on report?
Sorry, none tonight.
Unfinished, first item, unfinished business on public hearings, BLDC 1400010, Ham Dog's Restaurant with the applicant, please come to the microphone.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Krompottic with KLS Planning representing the applicant who is Ham Dog's. Dustin Mills, the owner, operator is here with me this evening as well. I will promise to be brief and pick up exactly where we left off from the last hearing, given that we have a bunch of ambitious citizens here for other stuff. If you recall, you had some list of concerns. My client and myself and our group has, I believe, addressed every one of those and I'd like to go through them in very much summary fashion. If you could zoom that a bit, please. Michelle? So there are four items that I have, I recall from several of you mentioned. The parking lot flip-flop, do you remember the panhandle area here? And we had parking that now points into the south. We flipped the parking, changed the geometry a bit there, and now we have it nose-in. You can see it next down a little bit and so it's important that you see that note that requires an easement or boundary line adjustment to make that fit the city code. So we have permission, and it was put in your staff report today, from the owner of Sierra Automotive Repair to allow either an easement or a boundary line adjustment to square that up, get us a code compliant area for parking. The other item is the easement cut-through. This was, the chairman, I remember, mentioned this in addition to other Commissioners, but you see the parcel to the west, which is Sierra Car Care. There is an easement granted from one property owner to the other. It simply serves no purpose other than access between the two properties. Both see it as a nuisance. So my client, Stu Sandage, who's the owner of Ham Dog's site, and the owner of Sierra Car Care, Steve Yarborough, have agreed to relinquish that easement. And you can see right now that it just stubs into parking and landscaping and serves no purpose, so I think we have a favorable improvement there. The biggest thing that we talked about was the more substantial bollard program. That's what we have. This is also in your staff report. There's a cut sheet about an actual professional bollard that's corred into the ground and then would have wire rope, a cable that spans from bollard to bollard that would be put up any night that he wants to use that parking after 11 o'clock. So what you'd have here is there's a bollard, you can see the little black dots. Two of them would have to be put up daily because this would be permanent, the one in the landscape island, and then this one is existing today. So what we decided to do was core those areas out, put the bollards in, actually padlock them, and then have a real substantial kind of rope-to-rope, I mean, bollard-to-bollard with wire rope that would, with no parking signs. Also, you see the sign that says, "No Parking, 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM." That would be put in front of every one of the stalls noted as a towaway zone, so it's very aggressive signing and a way to manage this after 11:00 PM. And then the other issue that you had was, you know, we talked a lot about what type of trees that we could have good screening of the view to the Hillcrest Apartments. I talked to a landscape architect who was Tree Hugger Studio, also a certified arborist. Both agreed to a couple of deciduous trees that would have the right kind of canopy bulk and height and screen noise and filter, screen noise and view from this property into the apartments. So those were kind of the big issues. The other thing I did want to touch to, I think it should be important to the Commission, is we do have seven conditions that we've agreed to, either proposed or staff brought to our attention and we've come to agreement on them. Those would be closing the entire bank of apartments, so there's 31 parking stalls on the south side that would be closed every day after 11:00 PM. No loitering on the south side by employees or customers, so basically no activity on the south side of the building after 11:00 PM. No smoking on the south side of the building by employees at any time, so that's not a, that's a 24-hour restriction staff brought up. Another one, because sometimes people have concern that these evolve to a nightclub and those types of uses, we have no accessory live or recorded entertainment allowed in the restaurant at any time. Ham Dog's is a restaurant with alcohol, has a little bar area, and that's how they attract their customer base. No outdoor dining at any time would be the fifth condition. Again, noise or compatibility related. No dumping of trash after 9:00 PM on any day. And then the other, which I touched on, which is adding all of the trees on the south property line spaced three parking stalls apart with two-and-a-half-inch caliper deciduous trees. So those are kind of the important conditions as it relates to the mitigation and trying to ensure some level of compatibility here. I would point out, and staff did it too, but although the code does not, the noise ordinance does not apply in this case because it's MU zone that we're in, next to MU zoning to the south, we're making an extra effort to make sure that we are compatible with those neighbors. I did send an email to the gentleman who testified last time, the owner of Hillcrest Apartments. He may or may not be here, but I never heard back from him because I wanted to share the list of concessions and mitigation that we've offered. So I will leave it at that. I do have some analysis on the findings, too. I think there's a couple of findings in play as it relates to the compatibility in this case and if you'd want me to go through those, but I'll wait for Q and A. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, John. Okay, staff?
Good evening, Vern Klose, Senior Planner. Mr. Krompottic went through all the changes that were discussed at the Planning Commission last time, and those resulted in modifications to conditions five and 10 and the addition of 11 and 12. Five was related to the parking program, the bollards with no parking signs and the limitation of parking along the south property line and with the addition, as amended, to remove the panhandle area pretty much at all times except for overflow during the day. Condition number 10 was also modified, and that relates to the landscaping that's required along the south side, the two-and-a-half-inch caliper trees. Conditions 11 and 12 were added, and those are for the easement here, removal of the easement and also the boundary line adjustment on the east side to provide the sufficient dimensions to make those parking spaces work and meet code. That's all I have, other than the fact that I provided you with two emails from the owners of the auto care, auto care and gas station to the west and the east indicating that they were in agreement with modifying those areas to make, to extinguish the easement and also provide that extra property on the east side. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thanks, Vern. Right now, we're going to open public comments for this item. Michelle, I have three. Is that?
Yes.
The item? So, yeah, I guess we should have disclosures first. Commissioner Weiskie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As stated before, I have read emails, I have talked with the applicant's representative, and I have visited the site.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I don't have any additional disclosures since the last meeting, but before the last meeting, the same as Commissioner Weiskie.
Okay.
Commissioner Reno, I just talked with the applicant's representative.
I have received emails as well as had communication with the applicant's representative.
And Commissioner Kaufman, I've also talked with the applicant's representative and had emails. Okay, for public comments, I have Wayne Mills. Mr. Mills, you only have three minutes?
Yes, I just want to say that I am the father--
Would you please state your name?
My name is Wayne Mills, and I am the father of the owner of Ham Dog's in Gardinerville. I'm the one that originally started it, and I find it ironic on some of the statements that I heard before as far as people that they say that it would attract. In Gardinerville, we attract people like Sandra Settlemeyer, we have county commissioners, we have judges, and we have working people. These are the type of people that we attract to our restaurant. We have like around 120 different items on the menu, and I guarantee you, that's not for the average person that was, you know, that would have a complaint. This is for family settings, and we have been a family for 20 years in Gardinerville. And like I say, everything from judges to construction workers, you know, come in there. And so all I have to say is the type of people that we intend on getting here are the same type of people that we have in Gardinerville. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next is Pat Costin, followed by Tony Pereira.
My name is Pat Costin. I've lived in Reno for 25-plus years, live off Plum Lane. I spoke at the last hearing here, and in the summary notes of that meeting, I've kind of come off sounding like I'm really against two-for-one drinks, but whoever wrote those clearly didn't understand the point that I was trying to make, quite different than the point he just made, that Ham Dog's is a roadhouse-style restaurant. This is not a Denny's restaurant. I'm concerned about a business that is offering two-for-one drinks from 9:00 PM until 5:00 AM in the morning. This is not Denny's offering omelet specials. This is a hard-drinking group. The facility, also, I spoke about, they are, have a special in the Gardinerville restaurant. If you show your concealed carry weapon, not a permit, the weapon, you can get a 15% discount on your tab. And I just think the juxtaposition of drinking and firearms is awful judgment. But the facility in Gardinerville is in a semi-rural area. It's known to be a relatively lively place, maybe even rowdy. It is known to the folks that live out there, that's where the Harley, where the Harley group hangs out. And I don't see that there may be judges on Harleys, but, and that may be a perfectly good approach in Gardinerville, but this site is quite different. I'm glad the drawing is still on the board, but you have a very confined facility here. From the rear side of that building to a series of two-story apartment buildings is less than the distance from that wall to that wall. I could flip a nickel from the building and hit it. The building is a cinder block or stone construction, the parking lot is asphalt. Any sound there, it's like having an echo chamber. And in the meeting last week, there was some discussion about buffers, and I see deciduous trees on the drawing up here. But think about it, we're talking about a permit from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM in the morning. It's dark. I don't think it much matters if you have a deciduous tree, an evergreen tree or a plastic tree, that a visual buffer isn't going to do much for anybody. The real issue here is sound and probably nuisance, but I'll stick with the sound. If you have a vehicle in that area, particularly the back area, it is going to be heard by that entire bank of apartments. There has not been a shard of information put out on mitigating that sound and--
You need to wrap it up, please.
I'll wrap up real quickly. I think that sound is the critical issue here. I think if you issue a permit, you're going to have a continuing, you need to have a phone call for everybody, a phone for the problems with sound. I also think, most importantly, the apartments immediately behind you are going to have a diminishment of value, absolutely a diminishment of value. I think that your current zoning is correct. Thank you.
Okay. Please state your name for the record and if you talk into the mic, please.
My name is Tony Sarris. Reno resident, and I've been a real estate broker for over 35 years, and I am the owner of the Hillcrest Apartments, and I wanted to address some of the issues that have been brought up. Number one, these are fully grown deciduous trees. I don't know how you plant a fully grown tree, but they're wholly inadequate as they're going to be planted. Second of all, this is a utility, overhead utility easement, so you're not allowed to grow tall trees there. Envy Energy was not checked and they need to be because you're not going to allow that. Third of all, quite frankly, I'm scared for the safety of our tenants. Off of the Ham Dog's website on Facebook, right, this is their coupon. The only coupon they offer, 15% off if you carry a concealed weapon on alcohol from all night long. That's part of their family business off their website? That's their family business right there? I don't think so. Looks like a strip club to me. Here's some more of their advertising. Explain what that means to the seven-year-old in apartment 37 that's less than a nickel toss away. This is ridiculous. I've operated and owned restaurants. Imagine this, let me paint the picture. It's Monday night football, San Francisco against undefeated Kansas City, full house. 11 o'clock rolls by, San Francisco's driving for a touchdown, everybody up and move your cars. You're going to have 50 drunken patrons with arms, with guns? You're going to tell them to move their car? Ain't going to happen. And if they do walk out, are they going to close their tab? Are they going to walk out on their tab? I mean, it's the worst business plan I've ever heard. Armed drunken patrons that have to move their car at 11 o'clock at night is not going to happen. You're just asking for problems. And the type of patron they have off their website asks these guys to move. Go move your motorcycle, your Harley, at 6:00 AM, at 11:00 PM. I mean, kids need a chance to be able to sleep and go to school. You're right next to 58 families. These people hanging out, the same crowd is going to be in Gardinerville, is going to be in Reno. We can't have this. We just can't have this. Number one, it does not physically work because these trees won't be grown when they get planted. They're deciduous trees, the leaves will be gone every winter. You're going to have your diesel trucks at 11:00 PM, angry patrons simply because they were asked to get up during a football game that they were watching. It's ridiculous. It's a horrible business plan. Don't impose it on them. Let them go. There's hundreds of places in this town that they would be very, very prosperous at. This is not one of them. Please don't vote for this.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make a public comment on this agenda item? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close public comments. Bring it back to the Commissioners for a question. Commissioner Woosley?
Question for staff. Can we first start with the question of, has Sierra Pacific been notified? Is there an overhead power easement here and is there a height restriction on the trees?
If there are, I wasn't aware that there was a power line easement there, but they could not grow trees that would grow up and interfere with the power lines. But no, Sierra Pacific was not, Nevada Energy was not, was not notified or on this. I did not see any overhead power lines there. They could be there, but I did not see them.
Next question, the entrance to this establishment, can you point out exactly where the door would be?
It's this area right here.
Gotcha. And also in this area, has there been any research, do we have any, do we know any surrounding establishments that do operate 24 hours that serve alcohol?
Not adjacent to these folks. There might be some in the shopping center to the north.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Reno?
Quick question for Mr. Krompottic. Looking at this map that's up on the screen here, the parking arrangement has changed, right? And over on the east side, have the trees been eliminated, too, along the east side?
On the east side of the panhandle?
Yeah.
They have because--
Right, and that's what I was--
Yeah, they would now be obstructions. The other thing I didn't mention in my opening comments was that this whole area is going to be closed off full-time with the exception of special occasions, overflow parking only. So even though we're dealing with all this flip-flop and the boundary line adjustment, it's going to be closed off.
Okay, thanks.
Just thought it'd be a simple way to deal with the whole, and the applicant said he, you know, we got about 50 parking stalls otherwise, so.
All right, thank you.
Other Commissioners? Questions?
John, I have a question for you, please. We just heard that from the neighboring property owner that there is an easement that goes along the backside of the property. When you did your research on the property, did you find a utility easement to this property?
I didn't, I did not find a utility easement. We have a site plan going back to 13 years ago. Never saw any reference to an easement, only the one to the west, the access easement.
Okay, and that's the only easement that you found in your research?
That's the only one we found, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd like to call the gentleman that owns the Hillcrest Apartments back up, please. For the record, would you state your name again?
Tony Sarris.
Thank you, Mr. Sarris. You discussed this utility easement that's back there. Do you have any proof with you this evening that there's a utility easement back there?
Any photograph will show the power lines and it has all four. It's got the power, it's got the cable, it's got the phone, and they're all a solid main trunk line right through there.
Okay, thank you very much. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
John, I have a question for you. The green line you have on the parking area?
Yeah.
That's going to be closed off all the time or just after 11?
This is closed off all the time going to the east. Those would be closed off after 11. The one on the south side, right?
But where your green line is, those are closed off all the time?
Right, on this green line are closed off after 11.
Okay.
This one is closed off full-time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Commissioners, any other question? Discussions? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reno?
Commissioner Reno, I'll get into a discussion here. One of my concerns the last time was that, I understand that it's in the North Virginia or the South Virginia TOD, but because of its adjacency, especially to residential and kind of off the beaten path a little, I wasn't too keen on the idea of having it 24 hours. Now, I know that's their business model, but they've done a lot to mitigate where they can, so I appreciate that. I still worry a bit about the noise noted and what might happen, and especially into the future. Who knows what this parcel might turn into? And so for that reason, I'm still going to hold, I don't agree with this project as shown, even though it's, he's done, Mr. Krompottic's done a lot of work on it. I do appreciate that, but I'm not going to support this.
No comment? Okay. Commissioner Stapleton?
Mr. Chairman.
Weiskie?
If you guys will look in your staff reports to Exhibit A from the original documents, photo number one, although the photo isn't clear, I can see where there is a power line pole which is probably behind the service station to the west based upon the orientation of the pole and what looks like might be some phone or utility wires traveling left of the advertised sign on the street. It looks like there's power line poles running east and west along that southern property line. And I know because I have a utility easement that runs across my backyard at my home and my neighbors have planted tall trees and Nevada Energy comes out every few years and tops them because they're not, you know, they're interfering with the utility lines. I'm wondering if these deciduous trees, which I had a problem with last month, a combination of evergreen and deciduous, I believe, is what I commented, I felt-- what I commented, I felt should be in place because a deciduous tree is barren as much or more than it is bearing leaves. So I, I guess I have a, although I appreciate all of John's efforts and work and, and I'm very happy with what I see, I'm, I'm not happy enough knowing that utility easement may be there. It hasn't been discussed. It hasn't been picked up, yet I'm pretty sure that's what I see going through this photograph. And, and if that's gonna interfere with the types of trees and the buffering that we asked for in there, then I don't know that I, I can support this twenty-four hour request. Thank you.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, um, I agree with my fellow commissioners and, uh, one of the, I had similar concerns last time about the buffering up against that residential property. And one of the things we did suggest was trying to find a way to redo the, redesign the parking so that there wasn't parking up against that southern part of the parcel. And just thinking about logistically, I do appreciate the work, um, but I'm not sure about those trees really acting as an effective buffer as well as the, the, what is it, a ballard, what's it called, the, sorry, the ballard? You can string that along there at eleven PM, but if there's cars parked there and then you gotta have people come out of the bar and, yeah, I'm not quite comfortable enough that this mitigates the noise impacts to the adjacent residential property, so I have some of the same concerns. I do appreciate the work that the applicant did and the effort that they put into it. But my concerns aren't completely alleviated either.
Commissioner Woosley?
Thank you. I was not here for the original proposal of this project, but, you know, looking at this, I, I really didn't, I, I thought a lot of things worked as this property with the intended use. But I was concerned about that buffer, but with the, with the proper, you know, trees or some kind of buffer between the apartments and the restaurant and no parking along there after a certain hour, I, I do agree it has potential to work, but I do agree with my fellow commissioners that with this being unknown of what the, with the power easement, what types of trees you could use and whether or not this would be an effective buffer or not, it would be hard to support this at this time.
Mister Chairman, Commissioner Wieske, if I can add to that. You know, we need to, to look at what is specifically being requested here and it's, it's a special use permit to allow a restaurant with a bar to operate between eleven PM and six AM. And what we asked for was to mitigate noise as much as possible between eleven PM and six AM and yeah, there's been limited parking. But what buffering twelve months a year has been provided? Because if Hamdogs doesn't stick around for the next five hundred years and they're only around for five years, as Commissioner Reno stated earlier, this special use permit stays with the property. It doesn't go away with the business, it stays with the property. And so what happens after that? Who comes in and who gets to open up and run a twenty-four hour establishment with these limited conditions? That's a concern that, that we might need, that might be, not be able to be dealt with down the road because it might be a twenty-four hour bar with no food. That, that, that's a whole different animal, so when we look at what the request specifically is and the findings for that request, and I think I'm, I'm pretty much set on where I'm ready to vote.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Reno, I, I'm ready to make a motion, but I, I would like to say I think this is a great location for a restaurant. Don't, don't get me wrong there. I think this is a perfect location. It's, it's not that, it's the eleven to six and it's really particularly finding A that I can't make, that it's compatible with the surrounding area because of that extended hours. And so for that reason, I'm, uh, gonna make the motion to deny this. In the case of... Is that good?
Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, are we? Yeah.
Go ahead.
In the case of LDC one four zero 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 one zero, Hamdogs Restaurant. Based upon the compliance with applicable findings, I move to deny the special use permit. And particularly for, I cannot make finding A.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Stapleton, I'll second the motion and I also cannot make findings A and E.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it's five to zero? Any action taken by the planning commission on a tentative map, special use permit, variance or skyway is final unless appealed. Any person aggrieved by the decision may file an appeal. Each person, entity must make his or her own appeals. Appeal must be filed with the city clerk within ten days of the planning commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fees. All other matters will be forwarded to the city council with the planning commission's recommendation. I see a lot of people that have these, uh, who wanna make a comment or hand these in. Would you please take these to Michelle who's at the end of our desk? So she can organize them so we can, uh, have people speak. The next item on the agenda is LDC one four dash zero 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 one three, Edgewater at Virginia Lake. Would the applicant's representative please come to the mic?
Good evening, for the record, Angela Foose with CFA representing the applicant Silverwing Development. The project before you tonight is a request for a tentative map to develop two hundred and eighty-eight condo or apartment units and forty-eight townhome units. This project is located on the east side of Virginia Lake. That's just south of the new development known as the Arbor Cove Senior Apartments and the Glen Manor Townhomes. The nine point five acre site was initially developed back in the nineteen sixties and that was with a hundred and eight single-story apartments. That property will be demolished and will be replaced with townhomes. And again, those townhomes, forty-eight townhomes right here, which will face Virginia Lake and then two hundred and eighty-eight condo apartment units. We're calling them condos because they'll be final mapped and they'll actually be leased as apartments for at least the first ten years. After that time, um, the, the property owner has the ability to sell them or continue to rent them. This project is part of the South Virginia TOD and does meet all of the TOD requirements in terms of density. We have a thirty-five dwelling units per acre density. In terms of landscaping, we're providing the required ten percent landscaping. We meet all the requirements in terms of building orientation and setbacks. In terms of parking, the TOD does allow for a parking variance up to fifty percent. We are just complying with that and we have a twenty-three percent reduction from current code. So we're well within what the TOD standards allow. There are two variances on the table tonight and the first one deals with a sidewalk issue. The, the code for the TOD requires that you have a street followed by five feet of landscaping, followed by five feet of sidewalk. We're able to comply with that on the majority of the site, again, from here, stretching all the way around here. The challenge is this area here in front of these two townhome buildings. It's about four hundred and thirty-five feet. And that, this photo right here shows you the steep slopes greater than two to one. So the challenge is if you have a road and then five feet of landscaping and five feet of sidewalk, you're basically forced to put in a retaining wall and then you lose the ability to get access to the front door of those townhome units. So we're asking to basically flip-flop that requirement, so we'll have the road followed by five feet of sidewalk, followed by five feet of landscaping. So we still have the sidewalk all the way around the project and the landscaping all the way around the project. Again, it's only in front of those two buildings, the rest of the project we're able to comply with. The second variance has to do with a requirement for pedestrian connectivity. In the South Virginia TOD, there is a code requirement that any parcel that's over three hundred feet wide put in a ten-foot wide pedestrian pathway. What that means is they, they, they wanna connect from one site, one side of the property to the other side. This is east shore here, this is Limbury here. The concern we have is that this is a residential development, this is private property. This is not a public easement through here, this is not a public roadway. This is somebody's backyard, this is all privately managed, privately maintained. There's a big security issue. The developer of this site has owned this property since two thousand and five, so he's very well familiar with the neighbors and some of the challenges they've had in terms of crime and security. At least once, once a month, they have an issue related to a break-in or a tagging or graffiti. That's a problem. So one of the main things we're looking at is how do we secure this area? We are gonna put in fencing between the buildings. So all of these areas here will be able to keep, um, non-residents out of the property. We're also putting in a wall here on the south side so that we can deter some of the folks from this development from jumping over the fence. We tried to put in gates here and here, which are our two main access points. Unfortunately, um, the traffic engineer advised us not to because of stacking requirements. So we can't meet the stacking requirements per city code, so gating is not an option. So by putting in a ten-foot wide pedestrian walkway, we're basically inviting anyone and everyone to come through this residence. Again, how do we make sure that this is secure for the residents? We are providing a walkway all the way around the property. This is a TOD, so people are encouraged to walk. The other issue is liability. If somebody comes onto this private property, they slip and fall, they can then sue the property management. That's a huge concern. How do we make sure that doesn't happen? Well, we keep people out of the property that aren't supposed to be in there. Again, we have sidewalks all through the property, so it's not like there's no pedestrian connection through the property. We do have a four-foot wide sidewalk that connects from here to here, so we do provide a pedestrian connection from one side of the street to the other side of the street. And again, we wanna encourage people that are not part of this community not to enter the, enter the community. We are gonna be putting up surveillance cameras. Again, we're doing everything we can to maintain the security of the residents. So we'll put a security camera here and a security camera here. We're also looking at putting security cameras here. That doesn't mean we have security guards. So you have cameras, so you can see, yes, Commissioner Kaufman entered the site. I don't know what he did in the site, I just know he entered the site. So you provide security by having cameras, but again, that's not gonna deter crime from happening. This is a big concern. This is the only time I've really seen this issue come up on a project in the South Virginia TOD. I don't know that any other project has had this issue, so it's probably, um, new to this commission. I know the Arbor Cove Senior Apartments that were built several years ago do not have a ten-foot wide pathway. The Glen Manor Project that was built several years ago and is actually in construction now for the next phase does not have a ten-foot pedestrian pathway. So again, this is something new and, um, we feel that we're meeting the requirement by having a pedestrian connection all the way around and through the site. We just don't wanna have to put in a ten-foot wide pathway. In terms of our conditions of approval, staff has added several. We just have a couple modifications. Item number twenty, staff has added that deals with the building architecture on the rear and sides. We're fine with the condition, we just wanted to show you that we are meeting the condition. This is something new, the old version, which is on top, and the updated version here. So we've put in some articulation, both vertical and horizontal, to meet that standard. Condition number twenty-one, staff has added, and again, we're fine with, it just basically says how will the common areas be improved and maintained? That's not an issue. Item number twenty-three, we have a small revision. The applicant will be notifying all of the existing tenants and he'll give them four months to move out. So that's not a code requirement, but it is being added as a condition so that we're all on the same page. That notice to the existing tenants will also be given to the city of Reno, so you have something in the file. Condition number twenty-three has to do with the Virginia Lake water quality project that we talked about. Not at this meeting, but individually. This project is really going to help redevelop the whole area. There's been several new projects, as I mentioned, Arbor Cove Senior Apartments and the Glen Manor and Camden Projects. This is kind of the up and coming area, it's being gentrified. It's a great location, it's a great time for this kind of redevelopment. The problem is the clarity of Virginia Lake. If you're there in the summer and the fall months, it smells and it's dirty. So the applicant would like to put in a circulation system to clean up the lake. We were looking at putting a condition to tie the tentative map to that circulation system and it appears that we will have to go through city council to do that because it's, it's beyond, uh, the planning commission's scope to do that. So it is still on the books, we definitely wanna move forward with cleaning up the lake. We're just not doing it as part of the tentative map conditions. And with that, I will, um, open it up to staff and be available for questions.
Thank you, Angela. Alright, staff?
Good evening again, Vern Close, senior planner. Uh, Ms. Foose provided a fairly good overview of the tentative map. It's, uh, increased density, it's a redevelopment site in a TOD corridor, it's appropriate for the site. It provides, uh, increased density in an area that serve well by transit and it's also located next to a community park that serves, uh, the area. With regard to the variances, staff believes that the findings can be made for the sidewalk landscape swap. There is a steep slope there and it would probably be safer to have the sidewalk at grade versus up the hill with a two to one slope or steeper. Also, it would provide a better transition with the sidewalk to the south so that once you got to the point where the grade went away, it would, um, remove in, back off the street and be, uh, in an area with a landscaped parkway. Also, um, the speed limit on the street is fifteen miles an hour, so it shouldn't, uh, really adversely affect pedestrians walking that section. With regard to the, um, ten-foot pathway, um, staff could not make the findings to support the variance. There is, this is a new project with no physical constraints constituting a hardship to prevent construction of improvement given the site's location within a TOD corridor. The pathway would provide a length through the project from businesses and residences to the east along Virginia Street to Virginia Lake and vice versa, so it would provide a good pedestrian connection. We did suggest as an alternative, because they do have a four-foot wide sidewalk on the north side, which is kind of pulled off, it's, it's more relative to, uh, people walking in, inside of the, the project, would be to provide a six-foot sidewalk in the area where the ten-foot one could be placed so that you get a ten-foot equivalent, but it's broken up and it's not quite as, um, you know, big of a boulevard look, but that, that could also be addressed with landscaping. With regard to the conditions, sorry about the several memos you got on that, we were working on these conditions for the last several days, so, um, but again, condition number twenty basically is code, but this just reinforces it because there were some sides and rears of the buildings that were not meeting code and we just wanted to make sure when the building permit came in that that was not lost in the, in the review. The second one is, twenty-one is related to the maintenance and we're in agreement with, uh, staff and the applicant are in agreement... applicant are in agreement that an association would be done, or the owner would provide for that maintenance. And the condition number 22 relates to notifying the tenants, and again, that condition went through several iterations, and at this point, it requires the applicant to notify staff when they send out the notice to the residents that they have four months to vacate. So they would just send us the notice at the same time, so we could verify that that was done. And finally, condition number 23 is not directly related to the project, it would have, you know, been a nice improvement. Fred Turnier, the community development director, has a little small statement to add on to that, but at this point, condition number 23 has been deleted.
Thank you, commissioners. Fred Turnier, community development director. Just, again, we've been working with the applicant on the water quality clarity of Virginia Lake. I believe it's been close to a year now, nine months to a year. And just to put it in context is that this is a discretionary project before you. The clarity of the lake is a priority for the city. Just recently, we had two priorities under our community development block grants, future funds, and the Virginia Lake water quality clarity was one of them. Angela did mention that we have some problems with the circulation of that lake and the smells that come out, and I wanted to put on the record that we are looking at opportunities to clarify this lake and to make it better, and make it that community amenity which it is at the edge of our transit corridor. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. With that, I'd like to open public comments. I have one person who'd like to speak and one who is in opposition but does not wish to speak but would like to make a statement. And that's Jean Braden.
Brayden.
Brayden?
Yes.
And Jean, you didn't want to speak, you want me to read the statement you wrote here? Excuse me, I couldn't... No disclosures of pending action when... I'm sorry. Noticing in the signing at a one-year lease still happening with new tenants, compensation and refunds equals moving costs, utilities, printing costs, checks, stationery, et cetera, security departments, pet departments. Says, "See more." Notice timeframe, how long would we have to find a new location, packing, arrangement schedules and utilities, moving van, et cetera. Will need to pay for new deposits, security fees, application fees, making working companies' utilities fees. There is this money supposed to come from. Most tenants are seniors, disabled, on fixed incomes. I moved in in August 2013 and signed a one-year lease with no disclosure of the situation. Okay, so Denise Davis, are you in the audience?
Oops. Hi, I'm Denise Davis. I'm an owner and resident of a unit at 2450 Limbury. While I'm not opposed to improving my neighborhood, I am concerned that the proposed plan is short nearly 100 parking spaces on-site. It's unlikely that Limbury Street will be able to accommodate all this overflow parking as the Pepper Mill employee entrance is on Limbury and existing street parking is already highly utilized. There is also heavy traffic on the street during shift changes, day and night, and the no parking zones near the two crosswalks on Limbury are not enforced. Traffic has also increased as the new housing on the east side of Virginia Lake has been completed and occupied. I would ask that additional onsite parking be required for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak? Okay. Michelle, do you have any? These are the only two I have. Is there someone else? Okay, if you'd come up, state your name, and then I would like you to fill out another one of these forms and give to Michelle, please.
I've already given them, that's okay, I'll be happy to do that again. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, my name is Carmen Gage, and I'm the president of the Country Club Acres Neighborhood Association. The Country Club Acres Neighborhood Plan encompasses the area of Plumas Street to Lakeside Drive and from Plum Lane to Mountain View Drive. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed development, the Edgewater at Virginia Lake. Although the development is outside of our neighborhood plan boundary, Mr. Witt chose to meet with the association board to present the Edgewater at Virginia Lake development for our comments and suggestions. This is more than I can say for other projects that have recently developed, that were recently developed in adjacent areas. Mr. Witt was told that we were a tough group to work with. Yes, perhaps we are, but this is our neighborhood, and we take an active part in an attempt to keep it the nice neighborhood it is. The Edgewater at Virginia Lake project was well-received by the Country Club Acres Neighborhood Association Board, especially since it included some very nice additions to the Virginia Lake area and much-needed improvements to Virginia Lake itself. The additions included installation of water clarity system in the lake and a retail restaurant along the lake. Silver Wing Development did all of the architecture and engineering for the retail area and was turned down by both the Parks Department and the TOD. Some of the TOD requirements were so unreasonable that meeting those requirements would have placed the restaurant on a parking lot. Why? When it is clear that such improvements would enhance the area, can't variances be allowed? The area where the retail restaurant was to be developed would have been cleaned up sufficiently that it would have kept people from living in sleeping bags in secluded places under the trees. Yes, I have seen this numerous times while walking around the lake on summer mornings. The suggested installation of a water clarity system would be a great opportunity to clean up the lake. At the present time, the existing fountains only aerate the area around them, often they not all are functioning. We believe it is imperative to the area's resurgence of, to implement a lake circulation system to clean the lake of the algae and related odors that dramatically impact the area, especially in summer and the early fall months. Virginia Lake Park is one of the most utilized parks in the city, and therefore, cleaning up the lake should be a priority for the city over other park equipment-type projects around the lake. On behalf of the Country Club Acres Neighborhood Association, I ask that you approve the Edgewater at Virginia Lake development. In addition, please review the original proposals for the retail restaurant portion of the development and request variances as well as the water clarity system proposal. Your actions in favor of incorporating the additions back into Edgewater at Virginia Lake development would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen, and we do have your...
You have it, okay, very good.
So thank you. I have Donna Keats, and you want me to just read your statement? Would you like to talk? "I support the Edgewater development project, the city needs to improve water quality at Virginia Lakes. Stinks periodically, the project interests to helping the city. Got that done is great. The city and the parks system should support this development in its efforts to move or improve Virginia Lakes." Thank you. And I also have Pamela Scott. And Pamela, would you like me to read this, or come to the mic?
I'd like to do it, please.
Okay, just come up and state your name, please.
Good evening, my name's Pamela Scott, and I bought a residence at Glen Manor Estates. My unit is on Limbury, and I was, fell in love with the beautiful scenery that I have from the front of my place, but I have since learned that the traffic on Limbury is barely tolerable at this point. There is constant traffic, quite often, people going very fast and very noisy, sometimes motorcycles without mufflers, or I don't know what it is. When I heard about this project, I found it very upsetting, as did my neighbors, because I envision, at least, the traffic increasing on Limbury. I haven't heard the number of units that are there right now that they're talking about demolishing, and I've heard the number of 338 units being built. I've heard increase in density, so I have to believe that this is also going to increase the traffic on Limbury. On Limbury, there is a speed limit of 35, and people go very fast. The rest of the streets around the lake are 15 miles per hour. Perhaps lowering the limit on Limbury would be something to be considered. I realize I can always sell and move, I don't want to do that, but if that's what it comes to, I very well may end up. But I envision it lowering our property values there on Limbury in Glen Manor Estates, and I am very much opposed to an increase in the density. I'm very happy that the stores along the walking way have been at least tabled, put aside for the time being, because I believe we need these open spaces for people. People are constantly walking around the lake, getting the exercise, enjoying the scenery, and I believe we need that. And I haven't seen any homeless people who sleep there bothering anybody. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item on the agenda? Seen, hearing none, closed public comments. Commissioners, could we have disclosures? Commissioner Wusley?
Commissioner Wusley, for the record, I have met with the applicant's representative and the applicant himself, and received emails.
Commissioner Reno, I met with the applicant, the applicant representative, and received and read the emails.
Commissioner Stapleton, I met with the applicant and the applicant's representative and received an email.
Commissioner Wiskey, I've visited the site, I met with the applicants, the applicant representative, and I also saw this the first time when it came through with their original proposal.
And Commissioner Kaufman, I also saw this original proposal, I met with the applicants and the applicant representative, I visited the site, and I've also received emails.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, Commissioner Wiskey, I'd just like to add that I did also receive emails and read them.
Yeah, Commissioner Stapleton, I also visited the site.
Yeah, Commissioner Reno, I also visited the site.
Commissioner Wusley, I as well.
Okay. Commissioners, I'll open it up for questions.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wiskey, first question for the applicant's representative, if you please. Angela, two questions for you. The first one regarding putting a gate up on Limbury to limit access. You said you spoke to a traffic engineer, was it City of Reno traffic engineer, or was it a private traffic engineer that you, a consultant?
It was the traffic engineer that prepared the traffic study, Traffic Works, and they looked at the dimensions and found that we couldn't meet the site requirements for the backing up and stacking requirements.
Okay, thank you. The second one I have is, right now, you show a walkway that goes from east to west through the property. Yes, that follows along there. Can you describe to us how wide those walkways are?
So right now, on this site plan, we have a four-foot-wide sidewalk on this side, and on this side, we are showing a 10-foot-wide sidewalk.
Okay, so you have a four-foot-wide and a 10-foot-wide sidewalk currently?
Well, this is correct. It shows that this dotted line, this dash line, would be where the 10-foot sidewalk would go.
Okay. Is that what's proposed in your design, or are you showing that because that's what the Todd corridor?
We're showing it because that's required for the Todd corridor, and that's what we're asking for the variance from.
Okay. But you've made your design work with the 10-foot-wide sidewalk?
The site can be designed with it. The hardship is not the design topography issue, the hardship is security, liability, and criminal activity that we're imposing on a private development.
Okay. So, and I understand that Reno PD even discusses the issue of crime and so forth, that's why I'm confused now if, if you can't put a gate up to secure the east side of the property and entrance from Limbury, whether you have a four-foot-wide sidewalk or a 10-foot-wide sidewalk, is that going to stop or slow down the crime coming off of Limbury? And if so, how did you come up with that? Because I, after we met, I started thinking about it, and that confused the hell out of me.
Yeah, the challenge is, if you're walking on Limbury and you see a 10-foot-wide, I mean, that's almost a street, a 10-foot-wide paved access. Common sense is going to say, oh, I should turn here. Again, it's a 10-foot-wide sidewalk, that's big. A standard city sidewalk is about five feet, so it's twice the size of a standard sidewalk. So that's basically an open invitation to anyone to walk from here to here. And again, we have already provided sidewalks all the way around, so people have the ability to walk all the way around. What we'd like to do is just say, let's not invite them into the property, let's keep them moving on the same path that they should be, which is a public walkway, rather than saying, come into our project.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. Vern, I have a question for you, please. Part of the Todd corridor requirement is to have a 10-foot-wide walkway going through property, through private property, or through any property? Is it supposed to be in a public easement, or is it supposed to be going across private property and inviting the general public to use private property as access?
Vern Klos, senior planner, it does not specifically say in the Todd if it's public or private, it just says that it has to be provided for properties wider than 300 feet, which this one is.
So if they put...
And it's to provide connectivity between properties.
Okay. So if you put a single house on that piece of property and it's 300 foot wide, because of its location, that property owner would then have to put a 10-foot-wide walkway through their property for a single residence?
Theoretically. I don't know that someone would put one house on 10 acres and...
All right.
It's possible.
Okay. But, all right.
Again, this is a part of the main access through the site that functions similar to a street, it's 24...
But it's not a city street, it's a private street, it's a private road.
That's correct.
And it can be blocked off at any time from the general public, right?
Theoretically, yes.
Okay. Does a 10-foot-wide sidewalk, does it have to be one individual walkway that's 10 feet wide, or can it be a sidewalk on either side of this access road that's five feet wide on each side?
The code requires 10 feet, but as we indicated before, if you could come up with a method to essentially meet that and split it into two different segments, that would at least be meeting the intent of providing that access through there, and that was something that we had suggested, and the applicant declined that as well.
Okay. So the applicant denied...
Declined.
Declined, excuse me, declined the suggestion to put a five-foot-wide sidewalk on either side of that roadway, which would actually be less in width than what they have combined and they're showing right now. And it would be as wide as a standard city sidewalk, correct? And it would be as wide as a standard city sidewalk, correct?
Yes.
In a TODD corridor?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Commissioner Stapleton, Vern, I have a follow-up question for you on that. So, could it be, the requirement is just for a 10-foot access for pedestrians. It doesn't have to be for vehicles, right? So it could just be a 10-foot, total 10-foot wide access, right?
Yes, it's for pedestrians, not for vehicles.
Okay, it's, okay. So, I have a question. What's the intent of this requirement in the TODD?
To provide connectivity through larger parcels. This is only required for parcels that are larger, wider than 300 feet. Theoretically, if you have, again, we have commercial and residential to the east of Limbury and if someone's down in this area here, instead of having to walk all the way around, they can walk through to get to Virginia Lake if they so desire.
So that...
Again, it's to provide pedestrian connectivity. That's part of the intent of the TODD is encourage, you know, get higher density, encourage people to walk, get them out of their vehicles.
And the need for breaking up a large parcel like that contributes to the walkability?
Well, again, I don't know that we're breaking up the parcel. They already have a road running through, essentially through the center of it anyway and it would fall along the, if that was a public street, there'd be a five, five-and-a-half foot sidewalk on both sides.
Right. But the idea is that the parcel is so large that instead of having people walk around it, which sort of decreases walkability, you have access from one side to the other for pedestrians to break it up and make it a more pedestrian-accessible friendly environment.
Correct.
But that's the intent?
Yes.
Thank you. That's it for now.
Commissioner Reno, any question?
I do actually, Vern. So, well, I guess I wonder, sidewalk or not, somebody could just walk right through the property, right? Because there is no security gates. There's no way to actually secure the site from somebody walking right on and walking right through this road, correct?
The way it's currently designed, I mean, someone could walk down the driveway if they so desired.
Next question is, does, it has to, it's within 300 feet of width, right? That's kind of the limit. Could they be putting the sidewalk over on the south side along the whole property line? And would that have justified or made the requirement of 10-foot wide sidewalk? Or does it have to be down the middle of the parcel?
Well, it says through the property, doesn't mean exactly right through the middle. That's where they put the main circulation driveway, was basically through the middle of it, so that would have been a logical place to put it.
Okay.
And there already is sidewalk on Limbury and there, I don't believe there's any sidewalk on east shore until you get past the project on the south there. It's just a series of driveways at this point.
You know, I can understand where the applicant's coming from. I mean, if I owned this parcel, why would you tire? But if I owned this parcel, I would, I would put sidewalks on both sides and just call it five feet and call it good. But I can see that they don't want to invite the public onto the private property and I can understand their concerns. Now, if it was gated, it would be a different deal. But because of that, I'm kind of siding with the applicant on this, that we don't need to encourage people to go walking through the private property. And I understand that the TODD wants to encourage connectivity, but I think they are doing a lot to provide the walkability around the site and it really isn't that far as you look at it. I mean, we are, someone's going to walk there, they're going to walk to Virginia Lake to walk around the lake, I would assume. And so, yeah, I think they've done their due diligence in providing a lot of sidewalks for the pedestrians.
Okay.
Sorry, that wasn't really a question. That ended up being a statement. I apologize.
Commissioner Wusley?
Vern, quick question for you. If the 10-foot wide sidewalk is placed within this property cutting across, does the city help at all, at all with maintenance or clearing of snow or is that all on the residents/tenants?
That would be the responsibility of the property owner. The sidewalks that are proposed along east shore are also on their property. In fact, that's currently city property that they have to buy to make the project work as it is currently designed, to get the sidewalk and the landscaping in along east shore.
Great, thank you. I have a question for Bill, for traffic. Question is on Limbury. With traffic studies in this area, does, I believe it is going from 100 and some odd to over 300? Is that correct?
For the record, Bill Goff, senior civil engineer. Yeah, they're going from, I believe it was 108 existing units to 336, I believe, is the new number. There was a traffic study done. All of the relevant intersections in the area still function at acceptable levels of service with the added, added traffic to it, so.
That was my question. Thank you very much. No further questions for me.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Stapleton, can I ask a follow-up question for Vern, for staff? On the, back to the, to the 10-foot access? So, will there be a gate on either side to restrict access in? And is that something that the city can control, whether they have to build this, build this, but then whether it's open or not? I mean, will there be, is there a gate?
At this point, that isn't what's proposed. There are no gates proposed and it's private property, so it's really up to the applicant to propose whether or not they want to have gates, even on the sidewalk portion of it. They are fencing between all the buildings. The only places that aren't fenced are the access driveways running through the middle. And I believe this driveway is recommended to be eliminated or gated for emergency access only, so the main east-west driveway through the site, at this point, is not proposed to be gated.
So there's not a gate there on Limbury?
No.
On the entrance?
No.
But if they wanted to put a gate, is there anything that the city could do to prevent them from doing that? So the, I mean, my point is, we're requiring that they do this sidewalk to create connectivity for pedestrians, but then if it's private property and there's nothing to stop them from putting a gate up there, then that defeats the purpose. So my question is, can you, you can't do anything to ensure that it will stay open, right?
A condition that is attached to the project, that's a possibility to...
Is it within the city's right? Maybe this is a question for legal. Is it within the city's right to, I mean, if that's not a, or staff?
Call it Hanson, plant engineering manager. You could put in a condition to require it be gated or not gated.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, sorry, for the record, Angela, because of stacking requirements, we cannot put a gate in. So we looked at putting gates in on Limbury and east shore, but the traffic study came back that it would not be suitable location for a gate, would not meet the stacking requirements per city code.
Sorry, I was referring to more internal gate.
So put in a pedestrian gate or put in a vehicular gate?
Either, both.
So we can't gate the entrances is the issue?
You can't because of the design, but...
Cannot, because, right, per the traffic stacking requirements, we cannot gate the entrances.
Okay, thank you.
Angela, don't run off. Commissioner Kaufman, one of the things that was brought up was parking. So can you address that? What's required parking? What parking do you have?
So, per the TOD, for residential development, it reverts back to just regular code parking. But because we're in the TOD, we get up to a 50% reduction. And as long as we provide some kind of nationally-accepted parking analysis, whether it's ITE or APA or ULI, then staff can approve that without a variance or a special use permit. So we have the ability to deviate from city code by up to 50%. We are deviating by 23%, so we're well within the TOD allowance.
Do these units have enclosed parking or is it all open parking?
The townhomes all have garages and driveways and the rest of it is surface parking. And then there's, I believe, about 31 spaces between Limbury and east shore for on-street parking.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to clarify one thing based on Miss Stapleton's comments as far as the gating. If they are required to provide the 10-foot access easement through the site, then they could not in the future gate it off because that was, that's a requirement of the TOD and they could not close it off. Because they, then they wouldn't be, they'd need a variance to remove that 10-foot sidewalk.
Commissioner Reno?
Can I follow, sorry, sorry Vern, can I just follow up on that? So if it's not a required walkway, then could they gate the sidewalk? Could they gate the sidewalk that will be there? If this variance was granted, there's still going to be a sidewalk there. It'll just be smaller? No? So would they be able to then put a gate on that? I know that the gate for the vehicular access is...
Well, if it was determined, determined that it was not necessary to provide that and this is a private development, I guess theoretically they could. It's kind of a...
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
The variance is to remove that. If it's not removed, then they would have to maintain it.
Okay, I'm good. I'm good. It's okay.
Chairman?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Reno, Vern, I'm sorry, you said 10-foot easement. Is there, is an easement requirement?
It's a, well, it's a 10-foot pathway.
Okay, so there's not an easement required through it? I'm looking at liability reasons. If there's an easement, then there's probably a way to shed liability. But is that required, an easement required?
In my, in looking at the ordinance, I didn't see one way or the other that there was an easement required. But generally, if you have a, for the sidewalks that they have to put around the perimeter of the site, they need to provide an easement because that would be on their property, so they would provide an easement. So it would make sense that they would provide an easement for this as well.
For the walk, for the pathway through it?
For the 10-foot pathway through, yeah.
The code sections as parcels that are 300 feet in width or more shall provide a 10-foot wide pedestrian walkway through the site to properties or right-of-way located to the rear of the site as determined by the administrator.
So it doesn't say easement, does it?
No. And it doesn't say it has to or has to not, is gated or not gated or private or public. It just says that the walk, it can be dedicated to just, to the residents of the property as well.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Commissioners, discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll start discussion.
Commissioner Wusley?
I want to start by saying I think this is a good project for the area and I support it as well as the sidewalk flip-flop on the end. I believe that makes sense and it sounds like everybody else does too, including staff. I do have a lot of concerns about this access through the property. This would make total sense if this was a retail property where you are inviting the public in intentionally, cutting straight across, you know, it would save a little bit of distance, but if you, if you add up the two, it's not significant. And I am, like I said, I have a lot of concerns because of liability that we've all been talking about, that is put on the property owner and the tenants of that. And I would enjoy to hear you guys' comments as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Reno?
Actually, I have other questions and other concerns about the site. If that's good, if we want to keep discussing this, that's fine, but I have other issues.
Okay, ask your questions.
For the applicant's representative? As I read through the emails, one of the concerns was parking along east shore Boulevard. Are you guys doing anything about, I mean, are you eliminating any parking? What's the parking situation along that road?
So currently, on the side closest to Virginia Lake, there is parking. On the side closest to our parcel, there is no parking. There's a couple little pockets where you can put parking.
Wait, yeah, I should say, I was out there, I think I counted six parking, you know, parking lots.
Yeah, and again, there's a couple little pockets of parking on east shore on, on the project side. With the development, we'll have, like I said, I believe, five spaces on east shore, which will be on our side.
Okay, so you're not really eliminating, you may eliminate one, it sounds like, along east shore?
Potentially, right.
Okay. And then I was looking at the map too. There's a lot of old growth trees out there. It looks like you're going to tear them all out? Is that what's going on along, along your property? The edge of the property?
On the edge, yeah. Unfortunately, because we have utility lines that have to be put in place under these trees, those trees are going to have to come out. So we are replacing them. There's a code requirement. If you take out mature trees, there's a ratio of how many trees you put back in. So we have followed all that. You can't develop under those tree roots unless they come out. We are putting in trees that are larger than code requirements all along east shore in an effort to try and get those trees mature in a faster pace.
And then, you know, we did meet and we discussed the lighting, but maybe for the rest of the commissioners, that maybe you can discuss the lighting along east shore as well?
Yeah, so at this point, there's no lighting plan proposed. We're going to have to follow whatever code requires. The townhomes, because they're facing east shore, they will all have, you know, wall-mounted lighting typical to any other house or residential structure. Again, we're going to follow code. There's lighting on the, this side of east shore for the lake. Security is a big issue, so lighting comes into play when you're talking security. So we would prefer to have more lighting than less lighting, but it's going to be up to what the code will allow.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I follow up with one more question?
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Question for Angela. For the variance for the walkway, the issue is security. And are there solutions to that that would be, you know, design solutions for that in terms of, you know, different fencing, well, lighting we were just talking about? And because, I mean, I know that on a lot of development projects, that there are solutions found to security issues through, through design. And so, did you guys find any way to mitigate those security issues on that walkway?
Yeah, and our, again, our suggestion was between buildings, to keep people out, we'll put fencing. So that's not around the project, that's just between buildings. So that basically only allows people to come in at the main entrance points, which are here and here. So we're also putting up surveillance cameras. Again, that doesn't tell you who's coming in, it tells you what they look like. You don't know what they're doing once they're in, but if something happened, it would hopefully give us a little bit more flexibility to find who did it. We can't gate it because of stacking issues, so we can't keep people out because of that. Again, we're trying to just focus all of the entrances and exits into two locations.
And you don't think those measures would alleviate your concerns about crime?
I think considering the history of this site, where there's one entrance right now and the amount of crime they have right now, I don't think it's going to go away. Okay, thank you.
Done with questions? Commissioner Reno, did you want to discuss anything or make a statement?
Sure, I'll make a statement. I think this is a great project. I, you know, looking at it, I think it's going to be a great asset to the neighborhood. I think for the variance, at least the sidewalk and flip-flopping the sidewalk and the landscaping along east shore, I can make those findings. Going through the, actually, the 10-foot walkway, I still have heartburn over that one, so I will not support that. But I think this is a great project. I think it should roll forward if we can make it happen. It'll be a great asset to the community.
Commissioner Staples?
I also think that this will be an asset and I wanted to just say that I appreciate the increased articulation and design elements on the backs of the building. That was a concern of mine, so thank you.
Commissioner Wiskey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based upon the request, request number one for tentative map... Based upon the request, request number one for tentative map, I can make all of the findings for that. I have no problems with that. Regarding the variances, I can make all of the findings for the sidewalk associated with East Shore Drive. I cannot make the findings of hardship specifically for the 10-foot wide walkway. The drawings that have been presented to assure a walkway on each side of the drive that goes east to west through the middle of the property. And staff has stated on record tonight that a five-foot walkway on each side would equal 10 feet and would meet the requirement of the TODD ordinance. Whether that sidewalk is four, four feet on one side and six feet on the other, or they're both four feet, the applicant's representative stated that there's an issue with people walking through the site that don't live there and a liability issue. Well, you've still got the same issue whether that sidewalk is two sidewalks five-foot wide or one sidewalk 10-foot wide. It's the same issue. If you cannot find a way to close your property off and secure it, you're always going to have that issue. I'm sorry, it's, it's not something that's being deeded to the city. So we're going to have to break the variance up into multiple issues so that we can at least support them in part of their request for a variance. Thank you.
Commissioner Stapleton.
Thanks, I appreciate Commissioner Wieski saying that. I, my questions about the security, I just want to add that I don't necessarily buy that the security measures, that you can't mitigate security issues through design. I really think that you can. And so I, I also cannot, that to me, the hardship doesn't stand up and I don't think that, so I don't think there's a hardship. And I absolutely think, I live, I live on an alley in a neighborhood where the blocks are very small and you absolutely can mitigate for crime through lighting and they're designing this, you know, from scratch to a certain extent. And there are ways to, to, to deal with that, so.
I also have to agree with Commissioner Wieski that whether it's two five-feet or one 10-feet. And if you can't close that off, if, if they could close that off, then I would probably support not having that. But I would have to go with the TODD recommendations myself. So if we don't have any other discussions, if we're going to make a motion, we need to break it up into the tentative map and the variances individually. So with that?
No, that's, that's great. I will make a motion then, if we're ready. In the case of LDC 1400013, Edgewater, Virginia Lake, I move to approve the tentative map for development of 336-unit condominium townhouse subdivision. That's my motion.
Can you make the findings?
And yes, I can make all the findings.
I have a motion.
Commissioner Stapleton, I'll second the motion.
And you can make the findings?
Yes, I can make the findings on the tentative map.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Pass five to zero.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Did that include the modified conditions?
I'll amend that to include the modified position, conditions.
And I'll second the amendment to the motion.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five to zero. Thank you, Fred. Okay, a motion for the variance, please.
Commissioner Stapleton, I will make a motion to approve the sidewalk landscape variance, subject to conditions. That's the first, variance A. And I can make the findings.
I'll second that and I can also make the findings.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five to zero.
One more comment for the record before you make this next vote, Angela Fuss. It, it, it looks like you're going to deny this next one. So I do want to ask on the record if the request for the variance was to deviate from the 10-foot wide path down to just the four-foot path. So looking like it's going to be denied, I would ask that we still have the ability to do maybe four feet on one side and six feet on another side, or five feet on one side and five feet on another. So again, the 10-foot pedestrian connection is still there. It would just be broken up.
I think that's what, Vern, isn't that what you said? It doesn't have to be a solid 10-foot. It could be divided into two five-feet across from each other with the road in between.
Senior Planner, our recommendation to them would be to, if they didn't want to do the 10-feet, would be to consider breaking it up. So if you were inclined to do that, I mean, I, I don't know that we have the authority based on this application to break it up, but if you wanted to approve it with two segments instead of one big one with a four and a six or a five and a five, I believe that's within what's being requested tonight as far as, you know, either eliminating the whole thing or allowing it to occur, you know, broken up or, or the whole 10-foot section.
Okay. Commissioner Wieski, would you like to make that motion?
In the case of LDC 14-00013, Edgewater at Virginia Lake, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the variance request to eliminate a single 10-foot wide pedestrian walkway required through the site for parcels 300 feet or more in width and allow the applicant to provide two sidewalks, one on either side of the east-west road with no sidewalk being less than four feet in width, if staff allows that as a condition, or I mean, as a motion, or do I need to make it a condition? That way that the applicant can do two sidewalks. Commissioner Stapleton, a six and a four or a five and a five?
Commissioner Stapleton, I'll second that for purposes of discussion.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, can we get comment from staff to make sure that my motion is okay and I don't need to make it as a condition first?
Claudia Hansen, Pun and Engineering Manager. The code does require a 10-foot wide pedestrian walkway, so you're, you're not eliminating that requirement for the 10-foot, for the walkway, but you're allowing it to be, to be broken up into two. So it is less of a variance than what it's been noticed for, so you are able to make that motion.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I can make all of the findings, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So according to the code, they still would need a variance to break it up? Or is that up to interpretation? Because if, if they just need a total of 10, then they don't need a variance at all, right? If they're willing to do it?
It requires one 10-foot wide.
One 10-foot wide?
Yes.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Stapleton, do we still have a second from you?
No, I withdraw my second.
You're withdrawing the second? Okay. Do I have a second from someone else? Okay, then could I have another motion?
Commissioner Reno, I'll make the motion. In the case of LDC 1400013, Edgewater at Virginia Lake, I move to eliminate the 10-foot wide pedestrian walkway requirement through the parcel. Is that, did I do that correctly?
To eliminate would mean you are supporting the variance. To deny the request for the variance would be to still require the 10-foot wide walkway.
I don't want the 10-foot wide walkway, right? So that would be to deny the variance.
No, they're asking for a variance for...
You'd be supporting the variance.
For just a five-foot walkway.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to approve the variance to eliminate the walkway.
And your findings?
I can make the findings.
And to make that change, what?
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't...
What specific finding?
Sorry, it's very confusing here. Finding A in the variance. I think that is an exceptional situation or condition.
Okay, we have a motion. We also have Vern who wants to...
Unfortunately, I didn't hear the last minute or so of your discussion, but it seemed like you were making a motion to approve the variance to eliminate?
The 10-foot walkway?
Just, just to eliminate it?
Right.
Okay, well, so basically you're approving that variance or you're recommending approval of that variance at this point with a motion? That's, am I clear on that?
Yeah, to, want to eliminate it, yes.
No, you want the variance to go through based upon not a 10-foot variance. So in other words, the variance to move it back to what they're designed at five feet. To have a five-foot sidewalk there. Is that correct? Commissioner?
What they have, what they have is a four-foot sidewalk on the north side and the potential for a 10-foot on the south side, which would meet that requirement. At this point, they are requesting a variance to eliminate that 10-foot wide section. So are you recommending or proposing a motion to eliminate the 10-foot?
Exactly, I am proposing a motion to eliminate.
And just allow it with, as designed with the elimination of the 10-foot section?
Exactly.
Okay.
So I think my motion stands, right?
Do I have a second?
I would like to second the motion and I can make the findings, or finding four is the one I have.
Okay.
Can we have a discussion?
Sure.
Is the motion to approve the variance? Okay, thank you.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So I need another motion. No, I said nay. Five, three to five. Is that, okay. So you'll have to have the 10-foot sidewalk. All right? Commissioners, you want to take a five-minute break or before this next session? Okay, if, if you, we're going to take a five-minute break. If you filled out one of these items to speak and you haven't turned it in to Michelle, if you'd please turn it in to Michelle, who's at the end of the counter? Thank you.
And if you're here for item three on the TODD corridors, if you come talk to me during the break, I'd appreciate it.
Hey, if everybody would have a seat, please? Okay, the next item is LDC 14-00015, the Southeast Connector Phase Two.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Before the applicant comes up, I would like to make a disclosure.
Go ahead.
I am currently in the process of purchasing a property in the Hidden Valley area. This property is within 1,000 feet, about 1,000 feet away from where the Southeast Connector will be. The offer has been accepted on the house and after talking with Sierra Reno Legal, we did talk about how this property could potentially be affected financially from that as well as the neighborhood I'll be in, as well as the HOA that I'll be joining. So it would be, according to NRS 281A dot 420, assumption is required, so I'll be recusing myself from this agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. I just wanted to put you on notice that we had the prior disclosure and recusal by Commissioner Olivas and with Commissioner Wieski's recusal. So under Nevada law, that reduces the quorum from four to three. So for, for this item to carry an action, you need three votes instead of four.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Would the applicant, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chris Wicker and I'm a representative for the Regional Transportation Commission. I admire everybody's persistence in sticking around today. It's quite, quite, quite a good sign. We're requesting approval of three special use permits and two variances. However, before we get into that, I'd like to preserve our objection to RTC going through this process. We were approached by the city staff earlier this year and advised it was staff's position that the RTC needed to apply for these special use permits and variances. It's our view that these projects have been approved by Washoe County, by the City of Sparks, in the seat of Reno and therefore we should be allowed to go forward without this process. So I don't want to waive our objection to this, but we have gone through this process and we have made the application without waiving that objection. And I've provided the two most recent inter-local governmental agreements that I refer to in that these projects having, or have, have been approved by the three entities. I'd also request that all the materials that the RTC has provided to staff and the commission be placed in the record. I think as everybody here knows, this connector road has been in process for many decades. It has been approved by all three government entities that are involved in it. This project has been approved by the City of Reno. The RTC is in the process of spending $65 million building Phase One, which is the bridge across the Truckee River. Phase Two is the necessary element to connect Phase One to the southern part of the north-south link. The staff has issued a report on this, a very detailed report. The RTC agrees with that report and we are willing to accept the conditions of that staff report. For the details of the project, Garth Oxl, who is the project manager for the Regional Transportation Commission, is going to present to you the details supporting our application for the special use permit and variances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Garth Oxl, project manager for the Regional Transportation Commission. I have a, a quick PowerPoint presentation here. And just for everyone's information, this is the Phase Two project. And just for everyone's information, this is the Phase Two project you see here in the colored part of this image. On the south end here, on the left, you have the intersection of South Meadows Parkway and Veterans Parkway, going through South Butler Ranch, crossing Alexander Lake Road, through North Butler Ranch to Miraloma, through the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course here to Pembroke, and then out through the U and R Farms where you tie into Phase One. City of Reno's corporate limits extend to Pembroke Drive on the north, down to South Meadows Parkway on the south. The first item that we have in front of you is a request for a special use permit to allow grading of fills of 10 feet or more. This image here is again within the City of Reno's corporate limits from Pembroke Drive on the north to South Meadows Parkway on the south. You see in yellow circles here, six locations where we have fills greater than 10 feet. In this location, Washoe County requested that we have no connection to Alexander Lake Road. In order to meet that request, we had to build a bridge. There are access requirements to get east and west under this bridge. That makes the bridge height 16.5 feet. You add in the depth of a bridge and we get up to about 20 feet or so. Therefore, that is why we have a request for the, in this area, for the permit of fills greater than 10 feet. In addition, this bridge separates floodwater in the event of a flood. So, 80% of the water in the flood event is out into the floodplain over here while 20% is here. We wanted to maintain the floodplain that currently exists today. So, that separation ties into, of the water, ties in down here where we have another bridge to allow the water on the west side of the road to come back, to mingle with the water on the east side. Again, the bridge here has requirements for how high that is, so water can drain underneath that and therefore, the road comes up over the top of that bridge. So, that is also an area greater than 10 feet of fill. As we come through the golf course area here, we have three general locations with fills greater than 10 feet. All three of those locations are in consideration of the City of Reno's request for golf course operations. All three of these locations here are where golf carts and maintenance vehicles for the golf course can cross. The minimum height that they requested is eight feet. Again, when you start adding in the structure on top of this box culvert and the pavement, we get over 10 feet. So, again, the areas of 10 feet of fill within the golf course are in response to requests from City of Reno for golf course usage. Here is a virtual simulation or photo simulation of the Hefaker Narrows Bridge. This was in the previous image, your yellow circled area furthest to the left. Again, you can see the space here. This is where the water separates the 80% over here, 20% on that side. Here's also a photo simulation of the roadway through the golf course. From a view standpoint, you can see they still maintain views of the mountains in the background as well as the residences on the other side of the course. The second item that we have for you is for the special use permit to request allowance for disturbance in a major drainage way. While some of the road does exist within the drainage way, the vast majority of the disturbance within that drainage way is in response to the flood volume mitigation that is required with the project. The flood volume mitigation will excavate the existing soil down, hence the disturbance in a drainage way. The benefits of doing this, as you can see here in the bulleted items, is we allow the flood conveyance to occur in a more natural condition. We also allow for bank stabilization and restoration of Steamboat Creek, which is going to improve overall water quality. And then the five bullet items you have down there. The mitigation in these flood areas by reducing the elevation of the ground allows for floodplain restoration, creation of wetlands, habitat enhancement, and also preservation of open space, which I will touch on in a couple more slides. Here's a photo simulation showing the disturbance in the drainage area. You can see the roadway here in the background and you can see our wetlands complex that we have between the road and Steamboat Creek. And from a reference point, this is Hidden Meadows Pond. The project does not touch Hidden Meadows Pond. The third item that we have is for a request for special use permit for protection of significant hydraulic resources. The items you see here are Soil Management Plan, Revegetation Weed Mitigation Plan, and the Best Management Practices. All of these are different reports that the RTC has compiled and submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers. They are also included as appendices to our special use permit application that was put into the City of Reno. All of these are an enhancement to the area compared to what is out there right now. It is infested with white top. There is no natural floodplain in existence because of Steamboat Creek. And as I've touched on a couple slides ago, the conservation easement, that also will protect the significant hydraulic resource. And I'll show on the next image where this conservation is. But it protects the area here in perpetuity, this green shaded area in South Meadows versus South Butler Ranch, here in North Butler Ranch, and then out here in the U and R Farms. All of that is for a conservation easement, which will permanently protect the significant hydraulic resource. We are working with City of Reno staff to see if they were willing to participate in establishing a conservation easement along the old Tahoe Pyramid Link, which is the east boundary of the Rosewood Lakes Golf Course. All of the work to date has been done in open, transparent collaboration. You can see a list here of different groups that we meet with regularly. One item to point out here is we do have a monthly standing agenda item with the RTC board that is always open to public input with, open to public comment as part of that standing agenda item. Now, as we move into the variance requests that are part of the special use permit, the first one we have here is to allow a variance for encroachment in a floodway. We've touched on that slightly with the location of the roadway as well as our location of our mitigation. And we have been coordinating with the City of Reno Floodplain Manager as well as FEMA. We fully anticipate doing what is called a CLOMAR or a Conditional Letter of Map Revision for this project. We support that process. And in addition, we have coordinated and will continue to coordinate with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Truckee River Flood Management Authority on this project to meet the variance and the requirements of the ordinance for encroachment in a floodway. The next item we have for a variance is for a rise in critical flood zone. Now, what you see here is again the same image we've been looking at with Pembroke Drive on the right-hand side of the screen here, down to South Meadows Parkway on the left. This entire area is Critical Flood Zone One. However, from this location to the north is where critical flood pools exist and those have established elevations that are referenced in the City of Reno ordinance. The colors you see here in red, or excuse me, in green and blue show a reduction in water surface elevation in the event of a 1997 or 117-year flood event. The colors you see here in yellow, orange, and red show an increase in water surface elevation of the same storm event. What I would like to point out with these rises is the orange and yellow and red are isolated and confined to open space. If you remember a couple of slides previously, this is all the conservation easement, protected in perpetuity for floodplain storage, open space, wetland, and wildlife habitat. The, it's a trade-off for decrease in floodplain elevation, or excuse me, the water surface elevation adjacent to schools and homes along this area, also in Heron's Landing. This increase you see here in the yellow, orange, and red is also limited to a very short duration. It's basically six to eight hours during a seven-day storm event. And that is the storm event, again, the duration of what 1997 was or the flood, 117-year flood. So, again, isolated areas protected in perpetuity for floodplain storage and open space, no development to occur in these areas. And it's for a short period of time compared to the overall length of flood event. So, in summary, we feel we have demonstrated compliance with the special use permit and variance findings by establishing protection of the Steamboat Creek floodplain and ecological resources. This project will provide significant community environmental enhancements through the open space and conservation easement that will be applied. And all of this has been done in collaboration with the community stakeholders and regulatory agencies. With that, that concludes our formal presentation. And we would like to request the remainder of our time be allowed for answering any questions that may come up. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Okay, staff.
Good evening again. Bill Goll, for the record, Senior Civil Engineer. Before you tonight are three special use permit requests, fills greater than 10 feet, disturbance of a drainage way, and protection of significant hydraulic resources as well as two variances for encroachment into a floodway and to allow for raising water surface elevations in a portion of Critical Flood Zone One. That has pointed out that Phase Two of the Southeast Connector runs from South Meadows up to Clean Water Way and the connection of completion of Phase One. However, our jurisdiction, the City of Reno, is from South Meadows to Pembroke. So, these requests are necessary to complete the Southeast Connector Region roadway. What's not before you tonight are the merits of the Southeast Connector roadway itself. The Southeast Connector's region roadway that is identified in the RTC's 2035 Master Plan and Regional Transportation Plan and is in the 10-Year Capital Improvements Plan. The City of Reno has a master plan policy, T 13, that states that the city should actively participate in the development of the Regional Transportation Plan and Transportation Improvement Program to ensure that the plans are responsive to city needs. The city is an active participant in the development of the plan and is a partner in their development. While the current Public Services and Facilities and Infrastructure Plan does not identify this section of the Southeast Connector, a planning case is in place and has been initiated to add this section of the Southeast Connector as well as the existing section of Veterans Parkway from Steamboat to South Meadows, which also is currently not in our Public Infrastructures Plan. Numerous correspondence from residents have indicated that the City of Reno abandoned the Southeast Connector alignment from Miraloma to Pembroke back in 1996. In 1993, the RTC revised the Tahoe Pyramid Link as the Southeast Connector was previously renamed alignment by eliminating the section from Miraloma to Pembroke and added the Mill Street Extension. In 1995, in their 2015 Regional Transportation Plan was adopted with that revised 1993 alignment. In 1996, simply to comply with the Regional Transportation Plan and what was identified by RTC, at this point, the city revised the master plan and removed the Miraloma to Pembroke Drive section to comply with that RTP. In 2004, the RTC adopted an updated 2030 Regional Transportation Plan, which included this general alignment of the Southeast Connector. As was the case in 1996, when we eliminated a portion of the Southeast Connector from the city master plan to comply with the RTP, the city has a draft master plan amendment to include the entire length of the Southeast Connector into our master plan. Key issues before you tonight are fills in excess of 10 feet, impact of a drainage way, and the variances for the floodway and the flood elevation in Critical Flood Zone One. The applicant has provided a letter addressing each specific SUP and variance finding. If it was in your packet and staff concurs with those responses. I want to be clear, we have three separate flood definitions that we will be discussing tonight. One is a floodway. A floodway, this is the active part of a stream or river designated for conveyance. Our Reno Municipal Code prohibits development in the floodway but allows for development with a variance. They are requesting such a variance. Other is floodplain. This is, these are lands adjacent to the stream or river. They experience flooding during higher flows and development with a floodplain is allowed but is strictly controlled to ensure buildings are elevated to protect above flood elevations. And then the third is Critical Flood Zone One. This is not a FEMA designation, but it's a City of Reno designation of critical flood storage areas defined by boundaries of the flood pool associated with the 1997 flood. Reno Municipal Code provides additional restrictions on development within Critical Flood Zone One that requires a minimum mitigation and analysis standards. If these mitigations and analysis standards cannot be met, a variance is required. The intent of the, specifically, we'll talk about the variances. The intent of the code prohibiting encroachment in floodway is to protect life and structures from being put in areas where there is greatest risk of damage during a flood event. This project will not place structures, people, or traffic in the floodway, but will instead shift the floodway by encroaching on a portion of the floodway and excavation of a new floodway area adjacent to the encroachment to replace and sometimes increase the actual available floodway conveyance. In the staff report, recommended condition number five, along with code and FEMA regulations, address the criteria required to demonstrate the adequate mitigation of this encroachment. Our code also provides criteria for development within Critical Flood Zone One, which includes mitigation of fill within this zone at a minimum of a one-to-one ratio and demonstration of no adverse impact when this minimum mitigation cannot occur within the same storage areas. By definition, no adverse impact precludes increases in the flood elevation within Critical Flood Zone One for all events up to and including the 117-year event, also known as that 1997 flood. This code is in place to prevent fills within Critical Flood Zone One that could remove storage volume or create increase in flood elevations in the Critical Flood Zone. The project, as proposed, will provide mitigation at a ratio of approximately 1.7 to 1, well above the one-to-one ratio. And as demonstrated by their flood modeling, will protect Critical Flood Zone One from flood elevation increases except in that small area to be owned by the project and designated as an unbuildable storage area in perpetuity, their conservation easement. Conditions six and seven in your staff report, along with code, will ensure that no adverse impact for all developable and developed property within Critical Flood Zone One is maintained. Based on compliance with the applicable findings, the staff can support the special use permit and variances subject to the conditions. I have received one email on support, 23 letters or emails on opposition, one of which these contained 18 signatures of property owners. I also received approximately 20 phone calls, either expressing opposition or having questions related to the request. With me is Carrie Lonza, the City of Reno Floodplain Coordinator. And she is here tonight. And she can better address your questions related to the city's flood program as well as FEMA regulations. And that concludes my presentation. And I will be available for questions at the appropriate time.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, Commissioners, could I have disclosures? Commissioner Weiskin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I met with RTC and toured the site. I have received all of the emails that Bill Goll just described. I have read every email that I have received. And I have also met with a representative from RTC outside of the tour.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I received a number of emails. I had phone conversations with concerned members of the public. And I met with, I spoke on the phone with RTC.
Commissioner Reno?
I took a tour of the site with RTC, read all the emails, and that's it.
And I've also took the tour for RTC from South Meadows to the new bridge. I've received all the emails and read all the emails and also met with one of the representatives for RTC. So, with that, we're going to open public comments. There's a lot of people, it'll take a while to get through all these public comments. If you're saying the same thing that somebody else has said, if you would agree, you know, to try to cut this meeting a little bit shorter, that get your points in and we would appreciate that. The first person I'll call up is Stephen Mollath. And-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Stephen Mollath. I'm the attorney representing the Bella Vista Ranch or Butler Ranch's North and South. I've provided for you over the last few days, two letters, one October 29th and one November 6th, 2013, asking for a continuance of this matter. And the reason why we asked for the continuance are set forth in your packet and in the letters I've sent to you. The first substantive meeting the Bella Vista Ranch had on this project was on October 24th when the Bella Vista Ranch representatives, along with their engineers, Tom Gallagher and Clint Thies, met with RTC. Prior to that time, we've had no substantive information relative to the project from the RTC. There's been no owner's affidavit requested or given by the Bella Vista Ranch to design this project through our property. There's been no appraisal given to us. There's been no resolution of condemnation for the, probably in excess of 285 acres that are taken through the middle of the property. We have not been provided a copy of the SUP application. We just retained Summit Engineering the week of, just prior to the 24th, to look at this. They have not had any substantial time to look at the matters. There's a letter from Summit explaining that. This project also requires the retention of an appraiser. We just hired Mr. Kimmel last week. I have a meeting with him next week. I won't be able to meet with him until next week. He has to give us some substantive information relative to the conditions. We've submitted a list of conditions with my letter to the Planning Commission as to items that have not been addressed on the Bella Vista Ranch. We are the single most impacted property owner in this whole project and we have not been contacted or had any substantive inter- contacted or had any substantive interaction with RTC. We would ask that this project be continued till your next meeting on December 5th, or alternatively to deny this project. There are so many issues, engineering issues, that have to be addressed. I think we can address them. We've had a meeting, I think, the last couple of days with RTC, and I think we can move forward on that, but we need a little more time to deal with it, and given the fact that we've only had essentially less than two weeks to deal with this prior to this hearing, I think the matter should be continued or denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call two names, one person and then the next person. So first, second person up is John Russell, and followed by John Fucik.
Hi, John Russell with Northern Nevada Laborers Union, and just here to say that we're in support of this project and with many other projects that we had a lot of controversy with, you know, the train trench and projects like that. We understand people's concerns about the floodways and all that stuff, and we understand the homeowner's sensitivities to these things, but we're here in support of this project, and we think this project should go through. This will be a great asset to the community and help us grow and carry on with growing the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you say the last name?
F-U-C-I-K.
Fucik.
Okay? I apologize. Followed by Trey Abney.
Commissioner, Council. My name is Jack Fucik. I'm a new resident here in Reno, been here two years now. I'm sort of amazed, I was an airline pilot for 40 years, and you know, we kind of stand at the door and watch the people get off the airplane, and it's kind of amazing to me to watch people try and push their rollerboard up the aisle to get off the airplane. It doesn't work very well. It sort of sounds to me, from the first gentleman's comments, that we're trying to push a cart here in front of a horse, when we really should have the horse pulling the cart. To go ahead and give this gentleman from October the 24th to now to go ahead and come up with substantial information for such a large piece of property, just kind of seems to me that somebody's not doing the proper planning. My other question seems to be, when we moved here two years ago, they were doing the work on McCarran Boulevard. As I remember, the sign said 14.6 million or something was spent on the section that ran from essentially 95 over to the vicinity of Merrilloma. I'm wondering if the traffic surveys that are done are available to the general public on any of the websites, and how much of these traffic surveys have been taken into consideration since 2008, when we had the downturn in the economy, to go ahead and provide for traffic figures on a forward-looking basis that would give you information as to what kind of traffic we would expect in the year 2035? I just think this thing needs to be put off for some time. It appears to me that it started, from what I can gather from some of the previous comments, in the '60s. In the '90s, we said, no, we're not going to do it, and now it's back in, we need to really have it fast, because in 2035, we're going to have major traffic problems. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Trey Abney, followed by Richard Odensky.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, Trey Abney, I represent the 2,000 members of the Chamber of Commerce of Reno Sparks in Northern Nevada. We are in strong support of the proposals here before you tonight, the SUP and the variance, and strong support of this project overall. Back in 2008, we put our credibility on the line, along with every other major business group in this valley, and pushed for the RTC 5 tax increase, which indexes your gas taxes to pay for RTC road projects. This was at or near the top of the list. We told voters we were going to raise their taxes, take more money out of their pockets, and we were going to build these projects, A through Z. It is vitally important that we move forward with this process and fulfill our promise to the voters. The voters of this community supported RTC 5. We went to the legislature, where they voted for RTC 5, and we even overrode a veto of the former governor to put RTC 5 into place. This is important for the future of our community. It's important for the movement of people to their jobs and to schools. It's important for the movement of goods and commerce. It's a new major north-south route that is east of 395. You have many more north-south routes west of 395 than you do east of that highway. We strongly urge your support to move this community forward. This is a road built not just for now and the needs of now, but the needs of the future as this community grows, and we urge you to take a leadership role in this and move this forward and provide jobs to this community. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mike Kenny, after Richard.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Rick Odensky. I'm a resident of Rosewood Lakes, 2780 Fairwood Drive, and thank you and the Commission members for your time, and I'm here to speak in opposition to this variance. And this report that's been submitted to you is filled with a couple kernels of truth, a couple outright lies, and a lot of misrepresentations. And one of the outright lies I'd like to point out was, Mr. Osko recently just flashed up on the screen a list of the people who are meeting with him and his organization, one of which was the organization that I represented at the time that that list was put together, Rosewood Lakes Homeowners Association. I went there specifically at the direction of our board members to tell the RTC that we didn't want to have a damn thing to do with them and not to get involved with us. They have subsequently included us in every report, showing us as being a working committee member, and we have asked them repeatedly, in person, in mail, and by phone, to remove us, each time they've said they would, and they haven't. Okay? So what you're hearing from them is not really the honest truth. I'm here to address one of many issues. We have, this is an environmental and ecological disaster. An ecological disaster is something that changes the availability or the possibility of something to live or thrive in the area. And what is being put at risk here is the homeowners who live along the edge of the golf course, myself being one of them. During the 2005 flood, the water came within 11 inches of filling up my living room. The RTC has asked for a zero-rise variance on their flood report, and they can't get it. The reason they can't get it is because there will not be a zero-rise. In addition, the Army Corps of Engineers is proposing to increase the flooding in the area with the flood control project. Combine the two together, and my living room will take on an additional foot and a half of water. Temporary water, granted, it only lasts about three weeks, okay, but it's a year's worth of reconstruction to take care of it. I'd like to, one of the things they say in their report is that this road, this arterial, will serve as a good conduit in the event of flooding. And they talk about the road being built at a 12-foot level with the grade, the off-ramps coming down the grade. I'd like to show you a picture right here. This is the location of where the grade will be, right here, and this is where the grade would be. Now, the grade will actually come in a foot and a half below the surface of that water, okay? So effectively isolating the road. You can't get onto it, you can't get off of it, okay? But this is a kind of misrepresentation that you'll find through everything that the RTC is doing. I respectfully request that you deny this permit. It is, this is the wrong place for a road. Okay? This is the right venue to take a look at that, and I hopefully, I hope that you will find that they do not have a good case and will deny that permit. Thank you.
Okay, Mike? Folks, folks, if you're going to clap, clap for me. Not for the speaker, thanks, but, okay? Followed by Jack Peterson.
Councilmen and members, for the name, Mike Kenny, Vice President of the Laborers Union, representing 1,000 families and their workers, lifelong resident of Reno. You know, the opposition for the train trench was about the same what I'm hearing here. Now that the train trench is built, it's one of the better projects that has been built in this area. I urge you to issue the permits for this project. People need work now, not later. This thing has been in the works for several years, so there isn't anything else really holding this thing up, except for opposition, but the opposition has been there for years and years and years. I'm sure the Army Corps of Engineers is doing their due diligence, along with all of the engineering firms that are associated with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack?
I have a phone, but my issues have been addressed.
Okay. Okay, we'll put that, thanks. Jack, if you want to talk, you have to come to the mic. Okay, I have Rod Young, followed by Wayne Severs.
Thank you, Commissioner. For the name, my name is Rod Young, representing the operating engineers, Local 3, and their members. I'm here today asking that you support, excuse me, support this member, or support this project. We would hope that with the economic environment we are currently experiencing, and unemployment being over 9% in the Reno area, that a project of this degree would not be delayed. We hope to have many of our members that reside in this area performing much of the work for this project, which in turn will undoubtedly be an impact to the economic value for the area. We fully support this project without delay. Thank you.
Wayne? Followed by Brian Reader.
Hello. My name's Wayne Severs. I'm in the homeowners association known as Hidden Meadows. I'm actually on the board. One of our concerns would be that during the restoration of the Steamboat Springs, that there could be pollution that's going to get into our pond. Why? Because the water that goes into our pond comes from Steamboat Springs under the road next to it. I support this gentleman from Butler Ranch Group, that we should delay or deny these permits until we know some more about what's going on. Our community could be affected, my community can be affected. One of the things we talked about was the fact of the abandonment, and a lot of my neighbors and friends bought lots and built homes because of that abandonment. We actually paid premiums, I'm sorry, we actually paid premiums for our lots. So now, my lot is going to face the road 1,500 feet away. Had I known that, I probably wouldn't have built the home that I did on that lot, and not would have loved my other neighbors and friends also. The Corps, as we know, is looking at the application by the RTC, and all of these issues that we're talking about, methyl mercury, arsenic, flood level increases, noises, and other alignments for this road are being considered now by the Corps of Engineers. Why don't we wait and see what these people come up with before you people have to make a decision on allowing or saying that they can do 10-foot roads, because that is what is going to be looked at by the Corps and either accepted or denied? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, Brian Reader, followed by Kim Roademeyer.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Brian Reader. I'm from the Nevada Associated General Contractors. We're in full support of this project. We also feel that it's a voter-approved project. When Washoe County voted for RTC 5 in 2008, this was one of the top projects that was promised, and we strongly urge you to support as well.
Thank you. Kim, followed by Michael Snell.
For the record, Kimberly Roademeyer, isn't it nice that all of these construction workers are here at RTC's request to support a project that they won't have to live next to? I'm here to speak against the approval of any special use permits or variances to RTC in regards to this project, as the following findings cannot be made. General Special Use Permit Findings A, B, C, D, F, and G cannot be made. Special Use Permit for Fill Greater Than 10 Feet Findings A and B cannot be made. Special Use Permit for Protection of Significant Hydrological Resources Findings A, B, C, E, F, G, and H cannot be met. Variants to Allow Encroachment in a Floodway and Variants to Raise Water Surface Elevations in Critical Flood Zone 1, which all the findings must be met to approve, cannot make Finding C, which states granting this variance will not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity. The admittedly heavily contaminated soil with methyl mercury that is less than 2,200 feet from an elementary school, which RTC plans to spend months digging up and moving around and working to fill in their base for their road, when there is nothing in their permit to address the safety of the surrounding families or schoolchildren who will be breathing in the toxic dust, and it is toxic, from this project, and the fact that they are now moving existing stagnant methyl mercury sinks to new locations that will contaminate new lands in different communities. God forbid there's another flood during the construction, as all this contaminated material will be washed into the surrounding homes. The admission that they pretty much can't get their no-rise certificate, because after years of telling people that there will not be any rise of flood surface water elevations, they are now saying, well, maybe in just this one area. The Upper Southeast Communities Coalition retained a hydrologist called MBK Engineers to review RTC's 404 permit application, specifically Appendix J, the Hydraulics and Sediment Transport Modeling Methodology, and MBK in their Technical Memorandum is clear when it states that modeling done by RTC is limited and insufficient. It goes on to state that the figures show that the implementation of the project with the proposed detention basin still result in localized increases of water surface elevations of up to 1 and 1/2 feet. This, in conjunction with the Truckee River Flood Project's planned increase of at least seven inches in the same area, would result in water surface increasing in the area over two feet. The report also indicates that RTC may have underestimated the impacts of Phase 1. Two different analyses were used and were not comparable. In conclusion, it states it is not clear how cumulative impacts from the Phase 1 project are being considered in hydraulic analysis for Phase 2 project. This should be clarified, as well as documenting impacts, to the hydraulics and sediment transport of the project area. I could go on, since my time is almost up, let me finish with this. In Exhibit H of your staff report, in a letter to Public Works Staff from RTC's Jeff Hale, states, "I would also like to thank you for the tremendous support your staff has provided RTC in the development of the hydraulic models and in negotiating the means and methods to accomplish this project. Wouldn't it be great if we, the people who could get that kind of support and means of protecting our communities from the people, from the city, whose salary we are paying? Thank you."
Excuse me. Please, there's no clapping.
Except for you.
I don't need it, thank you. Michael Snell, followed by...
I'm Michael Snell. I live in Rosewood Lakes, and Kim did a magnificent job. I just have a single item I know. The rules of the road are we don't deal in emotion and such as that, so my topic is strictly water surface elevation. That's something that's posted in your notice to the people, and I got to say that it's not going to be compatible with the surrounding property areas. We've got FEMA and FEMA and rate maps in the National Flood Insurance Program that banks look to, to finance homes at risk of flooding. We have engineering studies and elevations and base flood levels. We have letters of map revision and change. We have FEMA recertifications of those maps and revisions. For my house, I have a certificate of elevation from Reno Engineering that certifies my property is above the level at which insurance is required. Currently, it's 2.8 feet above the base flood level. With changes, as have been discussed, both from CH2M Hill and the M2K Engineering, which are at odds with each other, and with the flood project estimate of four to eight inches increase, we're looking at, leaving me with a clearance of seven inches above the flood level, which is going to make my... going to make my property flood insurance required. Now, this certificate was revalidated by FEMA in 2009, along with other county and city revisions. I have a list of all the FEMA recertifications for Washoe County that were sent to the County Commission Chairman, and for the city of Reno, which were sent to Maryka Shell. Some of those revisions are not reflected in the flood rate map that which is available online, but they're documented. So, the Southeast Connector will, pardon me, getting ahead of myself, the certificate for my particular property describes the elevation level for 125 properties in Rosewood Lakes. That's just on this certificate. There are several other certificates that describe the particular area. So, the SEC, the Southeast Connector, will raise the flood level to cause the insurance to be required where it's not currently, my property, and it will raise rates on existing insured by severity increase. That property is wherever that water's going to flow, because how's that water going to stack on the golf course, or on these areas that they say are wells, that are going to retain water for 7 to 10 days, or whatever? So, the worst case, that raising that water by 2 feet 2 inches, that's really going to get us.
You could wrap it up, please.
So, what cost? $1,000 a head, $125,000, just for the people on my certificate?
Okay, thank you. Paul McKenzie, followed by Jerry Cruitt.
Evening, Members of Planning Commission. I'll be short. Paul McKenzie, I represent the Building Construction Trades Council of Northern Nevada. You've heard from several different labor unions up here, and we find ourselves in a dubious position of being on the same side as the Chamber of Commerce and the AGC on this issue, as we support the advancement of this project. We believe that the staff has made the findings you need to approve these variances, and we encourage you to vote in favor of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, my name's Jerry Cruitt. I live in Rosewood Lakes area. I've been a resident Reno for almost 40 years, 30 of that as a practicing architect. Actually, I'm a recovering architect at this point. Beyond that, I want to tell you that this project really should require an impact statement, environmental impact statement. If the Regional Transportation Commission and their engineers are so sure that this is a safe project for this community, then let them go forward and spend a few more dollars. They claim they cannot afford to do this work? I say they cannot afford not to. One of the engineers, at one of their presentations at a school in Hidden Valley, made the statement after my question, "What will you do about the methyl mercury?" He said, "We're going to dig it up," I'm paraphrasing, "we're going to dig it up and put it underneath the road." If we recall what happened in Colorado in recent months, that was a flood like they had never had before. The federal government is being asked to provide $500 million to correct those problems. What happens to concrete? What happens to methyl mercury when it's underwater? That same report said that it's not likely that that material will go down Steamboat Creek into the river. I say "not likely" is not good enough. We need assurances. They've not provided those assurances. I would like to see them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who filled out a request to speak? There's a lot that people didn't want to speak, they just want to read into the, so if there's no one else out there, I'll ask. Commissioners, did you fill out a form?
I did. I said I didn't want to speak, but it's very difficult to sit here and listen to the sun.
Okay.
Judith Snell.
What is your name?
Snell, S-N-E-L-L.
Judith? Judith, okay, come on up.
My name is Judith Snell, and I also reside in Rosewood Lake. I hope you forgive me for being rather scattered here, but my notes are very scattered. For one thing, I'd like to comment on the gentleman that made reference to the trench and what a benefit that has been to our area, and perhaps he can offer the city council a method of paying for that trench, because they're going to be up against it next year. We're not accumulating the revenues that we need on that bond.
Could you talk right into the microphone, or pull that down just a little bit? There you go. Thank you.
All right, now am I going to shout? But that is an issue, the trench. That was great. I wonder how many, or if the Commissioners here are familiar with the actions of the Clark County Commission in Las Vegas area, that just raised, at the request of the RTC, that just raised their tax gasoline, fuel taxes, 3-plus cents for the next three years, for a total of 10-plus cents, over a period of three years. A lot of people seem to think that RTC just has incredible money that they can bond out, bond out forever, but they don't. They'll be back to the taxpayers. They're estimating this particular project at $250,000 to $280,000, and immediately upon completion, if you were to go to the RTC, propose programs and projects, they're going to start on the Geiger grade, turn around, turn around, debout, whatever they're calling that, for another $59 million. The RTC can run out of money, and they'll be back to us for taxes. I also think that there's another issue that's never been raised about this. What do you think is going to happen to those businesses that are along McCarran now, along Longley now, and along Double R? All of those people that put some of their lives into some of those businesses? If all this traffic is going to be diverted down the Southeast Connector, what's going to happen to those people? I think a comment was made about not getting off the connector in the event of a flood. I don't think the public realizes they're going to have two opportunities to get off that connector, one on Pembroke and one on Maraloma. In Maraloma, at Rosewood, where we are, at Rosewood Lakes, across the street from us are two apartment complexes that accumulate, have 900 units. That's a lot of people, a lot of pedestrians, and a lot of vehicles to put onto Maraloma. Thanks very much for listening to me, Commissioners. I hope that you will, at least, the very least, postpone this or turn them down. In construction, there's terminology called staking a project, and that's exactly what RTC is doing. They want to stake Phase 2, so they can convince all of us that they have a vested interest. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Stapleton, would you like to read? We'll take turns reading these into the record.
Sure. Dimitri Hollerbach is in opposition. Special use permit criteria are not met for this project. Please vote against it.
John Curio, we support the community growth and jobs it'll bring with the expansion of the Southwest Connector, in favor?
Denise Hollerbach, in opposition. I oppose this project because I see no valid reason why we need this project. There are too many environmental issues that negatively impact our community. Saving five minutes of driving simply does not justify the millions of dollars being spent to disturb a protected wetland and push the flood zone straight onto my home.
David Kaye just says he's in favor of the project.
Doug and Brucey Ingram, in opposition. Two specific items must be accounted for. One, environmental impact assessment must happen to determine the impact from dredging the soil that will bring to the surface lethal levels of toxins, not to mention the impact to geese, deer, and other animals. And number two, the overall impact of the project to the flood plain in the area. The area cannot sacrifice or support the precious few acres of available land to support flood events.
And Sam Lumpy, I am in support of the Southwest Connector.
Douglas Moran, in opposition.
Chelsea Graywood, in favor of the project.
Carol Broddick, in opposition. I am very concerned about flooding and environmental issues. Please consider the residents and wildlife before making a decision.
Philip Herring, in favor of the project.
Janice Campbell, in opposition. I am concerned about the flood issues and destruction of the environment.
Scott Fullerton, in favor of the project.
Joan Botchler, in opposition. I do not feel any permits or variances can be approved before much more study is done. An environmental impact study is the least that should be required to protect the safety of residences in all the area. Flooding is a major concern, as is soil pollutants.
Brandy Jones, in favor of the project.
Ronald Mora, in opposition.
Shane Javison, in favor of the project.
John York, in opposition.
Curtis Sanders, in favor of the project.
Marge Franzen, in opposition. It is important for the quality of life of citizens of Hidden Valley, Rosewood Lakes, Heron's Landing, and Donner Springs that the USACE order an EIS before RTC is allowed to begin work on Phase 2.
Nathan George, in favor of the project.
Sally Moran, in opposition.
Bruce Panther, or Brian Panther, I think, is in favor of the project.
You gave me all the ones with the long comments. Dale Anderson, in opposition. And the bad writing, no offense.
You just read better. Charles Knight, in favor of the project.
Mary Anderson, in opposition. SEC use permit, no. Flood traffic, environment, property loss, flood insurance, loss of property values.
Debbie Knight, in favor of the project.
Bill Rosemark, in opposition. This road is unnecessary. Traffic on McCarran flows well. Fix existing roads, do not affect wildlife in the area.
Bailey Knight, in favor of the project.
Jessica Crankle Rosemar, in opposition. Hidden Valley area has flood issues, and the connector will make them worse. There are bald eagles, pelicans, and other wildlife seen yearly that will have their habitat disturbed. The increase in the size of McCarran should have helped to alleviate some of this. Maybe work further east with other counties, especially if these include federal lands.
Brian Martin, in favor of the project.
Michelle Ruiz, in opposition.
Adolfo Aguayen, in favor of the project.
Veronica Marson, in opposition.
Tracy Holland, in favor.
Joe Marson, in opposition.
William Grineer, I am in favor of the Southwest Connector.
Vida Christian, in opposition. Has noise study been done for this site? I want noise meter put on my property. I want to have land. Oh, agent from RTC to call me, please. 415-775-7414-856.
Kara Beveridge, I am in, I am a worker directly affected by this project. I'm in favor of this project.
Kristen Leia Struford, in opposition. The special use permit request places residences into a flood zone that are not currently in a flood zone. Is this still the most cost-effective route with additional 10 feet of fill required?
Traveras, in favor of the project.
Dean and Linda Graves, in opposition. Stop the link, save the wetlands. The road is not needed now or in 30 years.
Jose Rivas, in favor of the project.
Cynthia Adams, in opposition. I am concerned that the Southeast Connector is so close to McCarran and a beautiful, through a beautiful wetland, it would be better if it could go through BLM Land to the East.
Floyd Williams, in favor of the project.
Cheryl Signo, in opposition. Please consider EPA study before making final decisions.
Timmy Gray, in favor of the project. Michael Britton, in favor of the project. Michael Witt, the project has been studied for many years. First phase is under construction. This project will help with traffic congestion. Doris, I'm sorry, I didn't know you had more.
I do. Cheryl Signo, in opposition. Living in Hidden Valley area for 27 years, my home has been involved in both major flood events. The Army Corps has confirmed that when the Truckee River flood project is completed, lower sections of Hidden Valley will get upwards of 7 inches more of floodwater. Also, they did not take into account of the possibility of the SEC being there because they did not have enough information. My other concerns are the potential for contaminated soil to be disturbed and create health issues, the wetlands that would be destroyed, and of course, to lose a very wonderful 18-hole golf course is extremely disturbing.
Doris Schwank, I'm in favor of the connector.
David and Carol Villem, in opposition.
Taylor Poulon, in favor.
Ken Morgan, in opposition. I have flooded three times in my house. I think it is ridiculous to put in the Southeast Connector.
Andrew Howard, in favor.
Karen Duck, in opposition. Why is the city of Reno involved in planning the connector when this is an RTC job?
Rod Cooper, in favor.
Brand Duck, in opposition. If the SEC is approved for construction based on Corps of Engineers acceptance, my question is how if the contractor going, how is the contractor going to build the roadway fill sections and keep the contaminated soil encapsulated and not flow into waterways? And how will this be maintained to ensure contamination does not occur?
Philip Bush, I feel the Southwest Connector is a necessity and badly needed project. I am supportive of the study that has been done. I have concerns about any changes in the flood plain, but as long as the rule of the amount of material imported is matched by the same taken in export, I am in complete support.
Mr. and Mrs. J.C. Hanson, in opposition. We were, November 7, 2013, we were driving west on Pembroke Drive, Penbrook Drive, when a large six-point buck jumped the fence towards the meadows. This is the exact location for the proposed freeway. Wildlife will no longer have its habitat to live if the freeway is built. We suggest to direct the freeway to McCarran where the infrastructure already exists.
Matthew Setti says needs resources. I have reviewed the environmental and can support the project for environmental and transportation reasons. Mary Horvin is in favor. Christine Setti is in favor. Josh Thompson is in favor. Great, much-needed project. Brian Roll, the section Phase 2 is a vital project for economy and future traffic congestion relief, in favor. William Wright, in favor. Long plan and assessed analysis project. This is the last phase of a, I can't read all this, the Tahoe Pyramid Link to be constructed, a vital part of the 235 RTC, I think, and future range, plans for urban Washoe and cities. Duane Kilgore is in favor. Dylan Gallagher is in favor. David Dodson is in favor. Ken Green, in favor. Jeremy Bachmann is in favor. Patrick Rucker is in favor. Okay, with that, we'll close the public comments. Take it back to the Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, before you bring it back to the Commissioners, RTC reserved 4 minutes and 25 seconds earlier to respond to some of the questions brought up in public comment. Before I start asking questions, I would like RTC to have their remaining 4 minutes and 25 seconds to respond. It may answer some of the questions that I have.
Okay, Garth?
Thank you, and I'll try to touch on a couple of items that were raised. I was trying to jot some notes back there, but obviously, I would like to spend more time with Commissioners, specific questions as it relates to the project, but just from a couple of global standpoints, we've heard some comments about the Section 404 permit, and an EIS is required. And just for the record, that is something the Army Corps of Engineers is evaluating. Many of the items that were brought forth that are concerns are part of our 404 permit application, mercury, wildlife. Mercury, wildlife, restoration, all of those are in the 404 application that the Army Corps of Engineers currently has. Another one we hear is McCarren Boulevard. While we have widened a section of that, and we will widen another section of that here within, starting a year, year and a half from now, McCarren Boulevard is a ring road. It parallels the Southeast Connector for approximately a mile. The Southeast Connector is the last five and a half miles of an overall nine-mile project. If you just look in Reno, if you look at everything from back when this was first studied, it's the last piece of a 16-mile north-south road. McCarren and the Southeast Connector serve extremely different purposes. It does not work to just widen McCarren. Traffic forecast and population was mentioned. The last time we did a traffic update was in November 2011. That did take into account the downturn that the economy saw, as well as the population numbers. And we use the same population numbers that the Truckee Metals Regional Planning Agency uses. We do not develop the population numbers or the forecasted growth. That is done by that agency. With that, I'd prefer to answer any questions that the commissioners may have. I noticed some of you were also jotting down notes.
Thank you, Garth. Yeah, there'll be quite a few questions.
I think we'd like to add one more thing, is that we adamantly oppose any continuance of this application. I think the points made by the Butler Ranch are best addressed in our negotiation with Butler Ranch, or if we have to, in the eminent domain process. But the points raised by the Butler Ranch can be dealt with in another forum than the Planning Commission. The issue before the commission, of course, are the criteria for SUP and the variances, not the, not the engineering concerns of the Butler Ranch, which will be addressed in a different forum. Thank you.
And one thing I'd like to add on that is communications with the Butler Ranch folks has not been for lack of trying. Over two years ago, we first communicated with the Butler family to get preliminary entry for geotechnical and survey work in that area. So we have had communication with them for over two years. In addition to that, earlier this year, when the Community Working Group was developed, we had a gentleman representing the Butler family attend those monthly meetings. He has been receiving updates on the project. My quest, while we will definitely continue to work with the Butler family throughout this process, the two weeks notice, my question is, is when was the engineering firm hired when they have known for over two years that this project was coming forward? So again, we have attempted many, many times to contact them and update them. They have been getting updates monthly throughout 2013, and we'll continue to work with them, and we look forward to doing that in the future.
Okay. Commissioners? I will ask. Commissioner Reno, would you like to start off? Commissioner Stapleton?
I'll just, I'll just start with one that has come up repeatedly as a concern of the public. So question for staff or the applicant, just to address the methyl mercury issue. Just going over the staff report, I didn't see anything specific about how that was going to address, how that was going to be addressed. So maybe if you can give us an explanation of how that will be addressed, especially in terms of disturbance and containment. And then I guess part two of that is in terms of, I mean, that sounds like that's, I'm not a scientist or chemist, but that's a bad substance, right? Methyl mercury? And was there an environmental study, or I guess you aren't required to do an EIS, but was there some sort of environmental study done in, about that? And I wish there was something in that about the materials we received.
Okay. My name is Matthew Setti. I'm a senior scientist at CH2M Hill. I'm one of the project managers for all the environmental and permitting aspects of this. The issue of methyl mercury originated from the Comstock era. It had been distributed over the lands throughout the Steamboat Creek watershed, basically from outfalls of past mining activities 100 years ago in the Washoe Valley area where there was several large mills that used mercury as an amalgam to recover silver and gold. The mercury that we have in the soils out here is elemental mercury. And what happens is when it is in a environment that lacks oxygen, for instance, such as a wetland, certain types of wetlands, it can methylate. Methyl mercury is available to be bioaccumulated in the body and is quite dangerous. And there is a large study that's been done in conjunction with the EPA on the Superfund Site on the Carson River that deals much with this. The principal author on my team, Dr. Earl Byron, that wrote the methyl mercury documentations that were submitted to the Corps of Engineers, is also the EPA expert on the Carson system. So he's very familiar with this system. We have several elements that were submitted and available to city staff, as well as the federal agencies, US Fish and Wildlife Service, US Corps of Engineers, and they've been posted on the internet for public consumption since, I believe it's been 27th of July. These documents are, one, the general geochemical processes for the effects of mercury in the environment. The purpose for doing that was to educate the public so we all have a reasonable understanding of what the true risks are. We also have a document that looks at the fate and transport of mercury associated with sediment as it transports in water courses. That was done through a hydraulic modeling protocol and an ecological risk assessment protocol, also to EPA standards. The third element of that is a soil management plan. And I do have one of my leads that developed the soil management plan here if we have more refined questions. But what we're really talking about is taking mercury that is fairly ubiquitous in the system, and we've gone out and drilled many, many samples. We've done computer models to delineate where the mercury is, what the depth of mercury is. We've looked at the concentrations in relationship to known EPA standards and concentrations, which are measured in milligrams per kilogram in the soils. And what we have proposed is worked with our subconsultants on this project, Black Eagle Geotechnical, to take a lot of that mercury of higher concentrations that could potentially pose a problem in future ecological exposure elements. And we will be cementing that mercury in underneath the roadbed. So it will actually be mixed with lime and concrete or cement in order to make an impervious and immobile element in the future. We have specifications in our designs that place that mercury of high concentrations above the 117-year water event.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair? Thanks.
Follow-up on?
Yes.
Okay.
I appreciate all of that. And I wish we had more information in, about that, and I'm disappointed that we don't because, you know, some of the findings that we're having to make, that we have to make for this have to do, you know, directly with impacts on wildlife and water quality. So, but now that you're here in front of us, you can tell us all about it. And so the, in your explanation, there was a gap between the mercury exists and it has these impacts, and then it's going to be cemented into the roadway. So, so is there a plan for how, you're going to excavate it, and then how do you contain it? And then is that a process that is, you know, to protect it from when you excavate it, it's not going to then go, you know, downstream or into the air? How does that, can you explain that?
Correct. Absolutely. There are plans and there are regulations that address that. The plans are comprised of the soil management plan that we've been working with the contractor on the means and methods for implementation of that. And that really goes to the issue of where the different constituents and where the different concentrations of material are within the areas that we will be affecting, how we will excavate those, and how we place them into the road. That is the soil management plan. The stormwater protection plan and the dust control plans associated with that go to the issues of the best management practices that will be enforced through specifications on the job sites, as well as through our NDP stormwater permits, because there's a component of that that addresses dust. We will also have Washoe County and a, and a construction permit related to dust control. Those will also have specific implementation measures for dust control measures in the areas of mercury that may, that may need to be more restrictive than in those areas that are, are on other parts of the project. So there are, there are both regulations that we're meeting with our design and our planning documents, as well as means and methodology documents that we've worked out with the contractor to make it reasonable and efficient and cost-effective to do this.
So that, that plan of the excavation, is there, who's the, who's the regulating agency on that? Do you have to, does NDP or anybody?
We have been in consultation with NDP. NDP does not, has not taken a position on this. We are not under a regulation to do this. The, the extensive effort that RTC has taken on this has been a voluntary effort because we knew the contamination occurred, and we knew this was a concern and a potential risk to the public. So we did not have a specific directive from a regulatory agency to address mercury in this fashion. It was essentially our idea that came up and delineated the mercury. It was, and laid this plan out there. We have had meetings with NDP. They've been a stakeholder all along, as well as other entities. The thing to remember is, most of the houses out there have been built on fill with a lot of this mercury. These people, the residents of there, every time there's been tilling of the fields or, or dust that have come through there, there is currently mercury out there. This is not an issue that's been caused by the applicant, and it's, but it is an issue that this project can remediate for future ecological, ecological exposures.
I'd like to follow up on that.
Sure.
My understanding is the reason there's mercury outside the waterway is because of the flooding prior.
It's difficult to determine the difference between the impact of flooding and the impact of diversion of agricultural irrigation water that contains sediment containing mercury. So the reason we believe why the mercury exists where it does is largely due to historic irrigation practices of those pastures with water from Steamboat Creek system. And it's been deposited as a, as the elements are adhered to sediments within those irrigation waters.
Is, um, do they have the same issue when Veterans Parkway was built?
The, it really, I don't believe it was looked at in the same sense of this. I can't, I did not work on that project, so I can't really speak to that.
The existing Veterans Parkway was a developer-built projects. I don't have any information on what they are required to do through the city of Reno in order to build that road.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, real quick, protocol issue. When these gentlemen come up and get on the microphone?
Please speak.
They need to?
State your name.
I apologize. The person that just spoke previously is Garth Ochsall, the project manager.
Okay. Do you want to ask about, but mercury? Let's talk about mercury.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske. Matthew, there's going to be an excavation process that takes place, and you're, you're putting together a procedure for doing so and for storage of the material. Is that completed at this time? Or are you, is it going to be completed at the time of permit? Because I believe Washoe County, our Quality Health District, is going to have to review that. Aren't they the governing body that, that is going to be watching what's happening with dust control? I mean, they are the rest of this county.
Yes, correct. Washoe County District Health has, has worked with us on the development of that plan. The plan was completed and submitted to the Corps of Engineers with our July 19 supplemental and posted to the internet for public access on the 27th of July. Washoe County District Health did provide comments to the core process through the vehicle of the Community Working Group, and we've addressed those concerns, the majority being dust control best management practices during construction.
Okay. We know dust control is taken care of by, by watering the dirt. And it's my understanding that, that the concern about the mercury comes from sediment? In other words, not dust itself, but when dust becomes wet? So how, it seems like it's a little bit of a conflict of, of interest. You want the dust to be dry so that you don't have a mercury issue, but in order to keep the dust from flying, you got to get it wet. Am I, what am I not understanding?
Having the mercury wet at, by itself is not necessarily a, a generator of methyl mercury. Methyl mercury is transported in water because it's water soluble. When the water dries, it generally leaves behind elemental mercury with that, or some derivative thereof. The, from a geochemical process. We are not developing in our, in the, in the construction process here, the conditions of anaerobic, you got to remember, when we are, this is at the surface and exposed to oxygen, which therefore also retards the methylation process. So we need both biological activity, because the process to go from immobile, relatively immobile elemental mercury, to mobilized methyl mercury is a biological process by soil bacteria that are, that are resident of anaerobic conditions, or conditions meaning no oxygen in the environment. So this is, so our, the methods that we've employed here are the industry standard and even exceed many industry standard methods used throughout the country on, on mercury jobs.
Okay, thank you. The second question I have is, you discussed using the, the fines, the dust, from the excavation that will contain this natural, not naturally existing mercury, but predominantly, it's been around for over 100 years, into your concrete mix. Is this, go ahead.
I can get to that. Not into the concrete mix. We will have regular concrete where we use concrete. This will be placed in an element of the subbase of the road for stabilization purposes. And the reason we are mixing, we have two benefits here. One is we have some expansive clays and other geotechnical issues that we need to amend certain elements of the soil. So one of the way that we get the soil to essentially be impervious to water, so we have a good foundation to build on, is to essentially mix a 6% Portland cement and lime mixture into that soil to bind that soil in place, to make it very resistant to the transfer of water through it.
Okay.
So it's part of the subbase treatment.
So it's part of the subbase treatment, then?
Correct.
Okay. So when that takes place, then it's, it's encapsulating this chemical by adding it to other native and, and other natural chemicals? Native being clays, natural chemicals being lime, cement?
Yeah, we have to remember that it's not like we have a pile of mercury here and dirt over here. The mercury is very, very small particles, essentially microscopic particles, adhered to soil particles. So it's soil contamination mercury. And we've delineated that at different depths within the profile, and that's how we've determined how much we're going to dig out, take that volume, and place it based on its concentration within the roadbed.
Okay.
The purpose of doing that is to keep the, to keep it out of access to the root zones of plants. That's why we have a specification to keep it underneath the roadbed, as well as to keep it from leaching from a water system.
Okay. You, you just hit it. That's where I was headed. Okay. So it's strictly under the roadbed?
Correct.
It is not out in the outside slopes, which is what we would all see if we were viewing it, and where the, the revegetation is going to take place and/or where water will naturally run by it in an event or area?
Correct. It is underneath the portion of the impervious roadbed, so underneath the part that water can't get through. And we have four-to-one side slopes on all of the areas that we are placing mercury in. And it's also placed, more importantly, up, the higher concentration stuff is placed high in the system. You have to remember, this project does not touch all of the elements of mercury out there. There are mercury findings throughout the golf course, throughout all the wetlands on the golf course. The high areas of methylation that are currently are, are happening out there are the golf course wetlands. We also have areas that are outside the footprint of this project that we will not be addressing the mercury on those projects.
Okay. One, one last follow-up to that, then. Is this process experimental in the fact that this is the first time this will be used? Or has this been used in other places where it has been able to, to be researched and followed up on to make sure that, that this process works?
The process does work. Our, I've run it by our soil stabilization specialists within our Our, I've run it by our soil stabilization specialists within our company. We have experts that have looked at this, engineers that are putting their stamp on this, therefore their professional liability on this. This is not an uncommon process. It's a little uncommon in a transportation job, because typically you don't have, it's usually a process that has been used on industrial sites, or mining sites, or other types of, of contamination sites. So, it's not typical of a transportation project, only because it's not typical that transportation projects impact these. The current regulations for mercury impacts on the Carson River, for lifestyle homes and some of the other subdivisions down there, NDP has required essentially the same type of material to be buried two feet, and then you can build a house on top of it.
Thank you very much. No further questions right now, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Stapleton.
So, the, just explain to me, elaborate a little bit more to follow up on that, the containment within the roadbed, how does that work? And so, there's no way that in 50 or 100 years, it breaks down and goes, you know, back down into the, to the groundwater or into the, to the dirt? And that is a common practice on, you said, industrial sites and...
Stabilization of mercury in place is a relatively common practice.
So, they don't like remove it and take it out and ship it to Yucca Mountain?
One of the reasons for not removing it is essentially contaminating some other place. We already have this, and we have an opportunity to permanently sequester it in an area that does not have a future potential risk for exposure to the environment. We could put this in a dump that is very organic. If we did that, you would have leachate coming out of the dump, high in mercury, and so that's a problem in that. So, this is our expertise that we've consulted on this. All, all agree that this is the best professional method to handle this.
And one last question. When you excavate the mercury out of the, it's out of Steamboat essentially, right? Where the biggest concentrations are?
No, it's, it's in the, it's actually in the pastures of north and south Butler Ranch.
So, everywhere that you're building the road?
We actually have very few areas that we're touching Steamboat Creek itself, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Reno, quick question about that. Back to Butler Ranch. I kind of understood that you didn't have access into Butler Ranch, but you do have access into it to do geotechnical investigation? Is that correct?
Yeah. My team has installed 24 pizometers to evaluate groundwater. We've done geotechnical investigations, and we've had right of access for, at least my team has had it for over a year.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner? Another question. Is everybody good on the mercury?
You've got to have a flood question.
Oh, no, I have a flood question. I'll bring that. So, there's a lot of concerns here about the raising of the floodplain, and if I, if I can have it, maybe put it on the screen, I don't know if that's possible, this variance, item B2?
Sure.
Where you show all the negative numbers?
Okay. Yeah. So, I'm going to drive this. Go left quick. There we go.
Okay. So, you know, a lot of the comments were that it's going to raise the floodplain, but it's looking at the, you know, looking at these numbers. Oh, this one doesn't have the same numbers I have. It says negative seven to negative three inches. Maybe you have another slide?
So, there's a slide before that.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Perfect. So, maybe you can address this?
Sure.
Kind of explain all this, because it looks like it's beneficial. You're actually reducing the elevation of the floodplain.
This project does reduce the elevation of the floodplain, and I think for clarity, let me address a couple things here. There is another project from the Corps of Engineers, 50-year flood project. In fact, Shirel Dean from the, from Flood Control Project can also speak to this. They did an analysis of their project and came out with some findings that said that it would be, based on their placement of flood walls, that it would increase flood elevations in portions of the, portions of this floodplain in critical flood zone one. We have provided our, our roadway geometry and hydraulic models to the Corps of Engineers. They have conducted a quality, basically a quality review and accuracy review of our models, and they included our modeling system with their proposed project and, and provided a letter back to the Corps Regulatory Office here in town that is writing the 404 permit, and they concurred that if this project was to be constructed in, in addition to their project, that the impact associated with their project would be less. So, we actually benefit their project, and we, and Mr. Stone Street, which is one of the lead modelers of the Corps of Engineers, has come out and provided that documentation to the Corps of Engineers. The way this project, the way that we have accomplished this through a very complex and long, a lot of collaboration on the modeling efforts here, is we have traded off essentially volume of material for volume of dirt, and that's where we, earlier we said we had to set 1.7 to 1. So, we've excavated a lot of this, and the purpose for excavating, in addition to the, the flood enhancements, is that we, it allows us to reconnect the stream with the floodplain. If you go out there now, we have this really relatively incised stream and a lot of white top, because it lacks the hydrology to support wetland vegetation. This project impacts 11.23 acres of wetlands permanently. We will mitigate those. In addition to the mitigation, we have over 140 acres of additional wetland environments, or fairly dry wetland environments, but wetland plants, and the removal of the white top in that area as well. So, this map you're looking at, the green and the blue, all show a reduction of the flood pool, and the way we did this is we modeled this under existing conditions without the roadway, and then without tweaking any other parameters on the model, we put the roadway in it, and we look at the difference in water surface elevations, and that's the data you're looking at here, is the difference in water surface elevations between existing conditions and proposed conditions.
Maybe you can go to the next slide where...
Can we, let's follow up on this, if you, if we could. This, um, the areas in green, right? Those are going to be less?
The green and the blue are both reductions of the floodplain over existing conditions.
Okay, and how are you going to get there?
Excuse me. Let me rephrase that. The areas of green are reductions in the water surface elevations over existing conditions when we look at the 117-year flood event.
And how are we going to get there?
You're getting there a couple different ways. One is we have excavated a lot of land out there, so we have, so this, this project doesn't have, a lot of people talk about detention basins. We're not, we don't have a detention basin here. But what we've done is we've essentially excavated volume in, in excess of the amount of water that we needed to. So, if you look at the difference in, in the water surface elevations that we had with and without project, the difference ultimately becomes proportional to the water, to the excavation of material that we've taken out of the floodplain. Now, we, we've got to recognize, we built a prism, a roadway, right, that goes through this floodway. We also have bridges to allow for flood equalization and many culverts to allow for that, but through the combination of hydraulic conveyance, I mean improvements in the conveyance capacities of things like clean waterway bridge, Mereloma culverts, Pembroke culverts, so taking out existing bottlenecks in the system, as well as excavation, we've been able to, to develop a, a engineering design that improves the flooding conditions in the area.
One of the things, when we went on the tour, was there was some mitigation, which, you know, by, by standards have to be one-on-one, but there's also mitigation, we were told, that would be two to one.
Are you talking about flood mitigation or wetland mitigation?
I thought we were talking about floodplain.
There's two types of mitigation that are being proposed. The flood mitigation requirement by ordinance 6164 of the city of Reno requires for a minimum of a one-to-one volumetric mitigation, so every one cubic yard of material you, you fill in the floodplain, you have to take the same out. This project has a 1.7 to 1. So, we, so we have excavated more than the one-to-one ordinance, and that's because we have portions of this that we could not do all of the excavation in the immediate area of the fill. So, therefore, we needed to demonstrate through hydraulic modeling that this system works if we take it out over here instead of right here, and this is what we've done with this models.
Okay. I'm going to beat you there. Commissioner Reno, the question I have for the next slide, because you have the plus, it's actually, there's a couple of areas where you see a rise, so nine inches, up to 12 inches. Let's, can you explain those? And from what I can tell, this is not detrimental to any homes where this rise will be, correct?
Correct. When we started to look at the many options, and the flood memorandum provided has, I don't know how many model runs, our hydraulic modeler, she's here if we have more specific questions, but we have many, many different scenarios and combinations of infrastructure and areas of excavation, and, and what we did is we looked at the benefit associated to the most proximate to developed or future developable lands, right? And we looked at that with, with respect to the feasibility of building that. We feel, we still today feel it's possible to have zero rise, and this flood memo states this, we can get rid of those rises, but to do that, we would, we would result in less of a benefit to those lands adjacent to developed or future developable lands. The reason why you see the yellows and the oranges on the east side of the connector is that that is also where we, we are establishing a conservation easement that will be supported in perpetuity through an endowment fund. Now, that allows us to designate that land as permanent open space for the protection of that. Therefore, all potential adverse impacts associated with increases in water surface elevations are isolated to lands that will be owned by RTC and permanently restricted as undevelopable.
And it's my understanding that this rise is, is short-lived too. It's almost like a slug that goes through the system there, and it's, what, a couple hours? Is that what, time to understand?
Right. The, the hydrograph that we use, meaning the, the, the flood elevation, or really the flood flow, this cubic feet per second flow over time, of the 117-year simulated hydrograph, the flood event of 97, roughly is essentially when we model it, it's about a six-day model run. And the peak of that, the very peak of that, based on the accumulation of the watershed, is about six, depending on the, on many factors, but it's about six to eight hours in that, in the, in the middle, or in, in a portion of that seven-day hydrograph.
Sure.
And this, this is the same hydrology that is also used by the Corps of Engineers and Truckee Meadow Flood Authority for their modeling of projects.
Okay. I had a question that just escaped me. It may come back.
There's a beep in there.
Oh, yes, here's my question. Sorry.
It's okay.
Go, go ahead, Dagny. I'll come back to it.
I was actually going to ask the gentleman to come up, but since he spoke out of turn like that, I'm, I'm, I guess we're good. I was going to ask him a question, but my question is, how, the culverts, and how is it constructed so that the water, so before the road, the water, you know, I'm assuming that the road cuts through, and so then how does the water spread out in the way that it did before, and then?
Right.
And is that, I guess, that's part of your modeling, right?
Correct, correct. There are, these are computer models that are run on a program called HEC RAS. That's a Corps of Engineers project, model, and there are mechanisms within the model to simulate the culverts that go underneath the road, and that allows us to, through hydraulic calculations, determine the capacity and the placement of those to, to demonstrate that. So, this is the standard, this is standard methodology. We're not inventing anything new here, and it's the same methodology employed by other agencies for analysis of the same issues. I, I can't remember exactly how many culverts we have. Mary?
I was consulting with Mary Horvath. That's our hydraulic engineer that has done the majority of the modeling. So, she indicated that we have multiple banks of, of culverts in areas that are needed based on the volume of water that we anticipate throughout the hydrograph or throughout the storm event, and so we have moved those up to optimize the performance of those, as well as the constructibility of those. We've also worked on issues of maintenance of those with, with, with the city, talked about the sizes of those with the city, and we have engineering specifications for constructing those in a very specific place in order to optimize the, the number of those in order to, because what we want to do here, to the extent possible, is we want to balance the water on both sides. However, we realize that doing that, we couldn't give the benefit to the greater flood pool to the degree we wanted to, therefore, we, we found that the best engineering solution is to have the short-term rises on the east side of the connector, and that's what we're really, we're asking for in the variance.
Yes, my next question that escaped me, I'm back at Commissioner Reno. You keep designing, or keep talking about the 97 flood and the 117-year. Is that a requirement? I'm trying to, why, so why 117-years? Why not just 100-year flood?
You know how, anytime we get a lot of hydrologists together, we argue about what, what actual flows constitute the different floods. The, when we started this project, we, we consulted with the Truckee Meadow Flood Management Authority, and their general designs were all addressing the 117-year flood. It has been the flood of record that we have written the flood ordinances that we're requesting the variances on too. So, therefore, that is why we have used that hydrology of, of that flood, so that-sized storm events. And while it is more conservative than the FEMA regulations, and we also feel that we will be able to meet all the FEMA regulations through working with the city of Reno and FEMA, it is, it is a higher flood event than the FEMA, so the city of Reno has a, or this, I should say, the Truckee Meadows communities, Sparks, Reno, Washoe County, through the, through the management of the Truckee Meadows Flood Management Authority, have essentially selected that to be a conservative flood to design stuff to. So, what we've done here is set our roadway elevation so that we have one and a half lanes in each direction above the elevation of that flood, as well as elevated portions of Mereloma and Pembroke to get those out of the flood, so you have access. So, the, the photo the gentleman earlier provided, where he says that's the road going out, we are actually elevating that portion of the road too, to ensure that the access to the eastern, the communities east of Steamboat Creek have access even at the peak of the 117-year flood. And also, that was a discussion that we had with Emergency Management Services, so we could provide those during, during those events.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Stapleton, I would like to ask one person, a representative of the public, to come up and explain. I know they, they indicated that they didn't think that the surface water elevation was going to be correctly mitigated, and if they, you know, if there's some other information there that we don't have, so if there's one member of the public that could come up and articulate that, that would be great. One member, please do it respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stapleton? For the record, my name is Rick Odinski. I am a board member of the Upper Southeast Communities Coalition, and the statement was made that the Army Corps of Engineers has taken a look at the modeling of the road and is included in their draft environmental impact study for the flood control... for the flood control project. I would ask that you see that in writing. The reason for that is, at their presentation, at the end of their presentation, I specifically asked that question in a public forum of the project manager if they had included the road, the southeast connector, in their modeling projections, and they said, no, they had not. It was not on the map, and therefore, they did not include it.
Excuse me, sir, what was that date?
You're referring to phase one.
Pardon?
What was the date of that, that you attended that meeting?
Mr. Aldean would know for sure, I do not remember.
Well, you, what month? I don't need, I don't need, excuse me, sir, I'm talking, excuse me, sir, I'm talking to you.
I'm, yes, I'm trying to get.
No, I'm asking you, because you just made a statement.
Yes.
Okay? That you attended a meeting, and I'm wondering what month and what year?
Okay, it was June of this year.
Okay. I don't need the date, I just want the month and year.
Okay, June of this year.
So you're referring to the phase one, that that wasn't taken into consideration, the impacts from that in the surface water elevation?
They had not taken into consideration any portion of the southeast connector in their modeling.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman?
Thank you.
Matthew, you said he was CH2M Hill, may I put a timeline to that discussion? The analysis that was conducted by the Corps of Engineers was completed in September as a response to the comments of the draft EIS. So it is being evaluated under the record of a decision that will come out in the final EIS for the fifty-year core project. But we also asked them to look at that and provide comment to the Corps of Engineer local office for consideration under the 404 permit as well.
Wait, while you're up there, Commissioner Reno. So, but they weren't, they weren't taking into account, we was just told, that the whole southeast connector, but doesn't this project improve the flood?
Correct.
Right, I mean, it actually drops it.
Correct. It is their conclusion in their memorandum that if their project is constructed, and this project is constructed, the benefit is better than if their project is constructed alone. You know, and.
I just wanted to make that clear.
And that, we don't need to prove that, that's out there in public for everybody to digest.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieski for Matthew. We have, I see areas right now under green and blue that are residential areas, existing homes. Are green and blue colorations areas of more water or less water than currently?
They are all areas of less water than existing conditions. The reason you see existing homes inundated or colored in these is that you have to remember, this is not the FEMA element. This is a flood that's more conservative, of a greater magnitude. Therefore, we are designing this road to be, to perform at levels greater than what is required by FEMA.
Okay, does FEMA look at this to determine their future maps?
No, we will be working with the city of Reno to prepare a conditional letter of map revision for the floodway, since it is currently out of date, and we are encroaching upon the floodway, that's variance number one A, I believe, or two A, I believe. And so we will be running essentially this same model, but we will be running it with the hydrology associated with the FEMA-approved one-hundred-year storm event, not the community-supported one-hundred-and-seventeen-year flood event.
Okay, thank you. Carrie, I see you standing back there, would you come up to the mic, please, and help answer my question also? Because I'm trying to dig into, and you probably saw it coming, the question of the residents who are going to reportedly be paying for flood insurance that aren't now, or there is a concern that this may happen. Would you please address that, please?
Yes, good evening, and for the record, I'm Carrie Lonza, I'm here with the city of Reno, I'm the city's floodplain, flood and drainage coordinator, and a senior civil engineer here in Public Works. So with that, yes, there has been much concern and consternation. I've also been receiving the calls about what this project is going to do to flood insurance and/or their mapping on the flood insurance rate maps. And although I presented also a couple of slides to just provide the basis of what the staff review towards the flood elements of this project is, given the time it is, you may not be so interested. But to address your question, no rise as a result of this project will be allowed. That is contained both within the FEMA review or the conditional letter of map revision that we have talked about tonight, but perhaps you may not realize that that is actually FEMA's opportunity to comment and to respond to us. Do they agree with the method and the analyses and the review that we have conducted and the models that are being used, that there is no impact on the floodplain? And so the project cannot cause an increase to the flood map or an expansion of those floodplanes. I do, in the matter of being forthright to you, want to let you know that as a community, we are discussing what changes might occur to the floodplanes separately, and that there are different hydrologies and different inputs and things that FEMA may want to engage us on as far as looking at just the update of what twenty years of development since their last floodplain map has caused. But that will be completely separate from the RTCs. We will accept, we will present both the proposed conditions of the project towards the existing conditions as we know them today, compare those, and determine that there's not been an impact on the project.
So what you're saying right now is that if this project were completed tomorrow, tomorrow being Friday, and on Saturday, we had another hundred-and-seventeen-year event, that surface water would not be higher in the areas of the existing residences on Saturday than they were today, Thursday?
That is correct. That project will have to represent to us, and has represented through the process so far, that it can achieve a no-rise, both within floodplanes.
You have been reviewing it, and the city of Reno is in agreement with that, correct?
Yes, in fact, part of public comment, we talked about, you know, the city's involvement with the RTC, and certainly, we have reviewed any interim product, any interim project. Again, that project is progressing slightly to refine the culverts and the alignments and locations, but we will perform a very rigorous review of the models, the inputs, and make sure it performs as represented to us.
When does the city of Reno get response back from FEMA?
Okay, and so, yes, and that we have required that a conditional letter of map revision occur to FEMA, in which case, we don't expect a revision, we are asking FEMA to say they agree with us about the analysis, creating no rise and/or expansion of the floodplain. And this process could take six months to a year longer if there are major issues that they want to discuss with us. We are using all of the FEMA-approved models and methods to progress this. And so we are staying very close with them to make sure that we are in line and that they understand what we will be submitting to them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question for, and somebody from RTC, Garth, maybe it's from you, because we addressed a little bit of it during our site visit. In the last major events that happened, residents of Hidden Valley and, I believe, even Rosewood Lakes area got trapped because of the roadways. I believe I heard it discussed this evening, that the existing roadways of Pembroke and Mariloma are going to be raised so that that doesn't happen again. Is that true?
Correct. For the record, Garth, project manager, but yes, that is correct. Currently, for example, Mariloma is inundated in water if a nineteen-ninety-seven flood event were to occur again. As part of this project, we will raise Mariloma specifically east of the southeast connector. So all of the residents within there will have egress capabilities to the southeast connector, which will have a lane dry in each direction, as well as emergency services can get into the community via that route.
Okay, so they may not be able to travel completely west to McCarran or Rock Boulevard or anywhere else to evacuate, but they will have the connector as a means of egress and evacuation?
I believe Mariloma would stay dry at all times. Pembroke, up and down a little bit, so further west on Pembroke, I believe that would still be underwater, but they would have access that they currently do not have.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions at this time.
Commissioner Stapleton, I have a question for staff, perhaps for the applicant, but I'll start with staff. In terms of, one of the findings we have to make for the special use permit for the cuts and fills is the visual impact and the bridge that's there, just, I think it's east of Heron's Landing, where I think it's above a ten-foot fill. The houses that are then to the west of that, how does that work with their line of sight?
I can.
That's probably.
Let RTC address line of sight.
I think that's something we talked about earlier.
Yeah, Garth Oxlough, project manager, I'm going to advance a few slides here to, I went one too far, previous. This image right here represents, so this would be Heron's Landing, as you mentioned, on the east, the open water, and then here we have the fill of the southeast connector as well as sound walls. See, it's, we can provide additional information, especially when the residents, when we go to Heron's Landing Homeowners Association, we're scheduled to be in front of them on November twenty-seventh, specifically about the sound wall aesthetics. But their backyards are approximately the same elevation as the edge of the southeast connector. There will be a slight rise to the road. However, with the eight-foot sound wall, they will not be able to view any of the roadway. The interesting part with the ten feet of fill here is this is a depressed location. The ground is lower here, so the ten feet of fill is really from down here versus the ten feet of fill from starting at their backyards. Their homes are already elevated above the ground in this location. So this is to scale for that area there with Heron's Landing and the roadway.
So they will see a little bit of the fill, but mainly the sound wall, and then the cars, they will not.
You will not be able to see the cars, correct, yes. And again, on November twenty-seventh, we're scheduled to be in front of the Homeowners Association to specifically discuss the aesthetics of the sound wall and get their input on what they would like to have those look like.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Garth, can you show up there? Let's talk about those sound walls. My understanding, the speed limit's forty-five, obviously, as speed increases, sound increases, so maybe you can talk about that? Have you done tests for sound out there, and what's the impact to the neighbors?
Yes, we have done a noise analysis, and the only area that reached the threshold for noise abatement, as it's called, we'll just use sound wall since that's what most people are familiar with, is this location here. The red line you see is the sound wall wrapping around to the fire access that Heron's Landing has. A little background on this, what we did for the noise analysis study is we went out and identified ambient noise, the noise condition right now. We chose the lowest noise in the community right now, which was forty-five decibels, and our analysis uses the highest noise that the road will produce. And that is, again, at peak capacity during your evening commute. So we went with the quietest sound that is out there now and used the loudest sound that will be in the future to get our delta. This location here of Heron's Landing is the only location that reached that, that exceeded that delta of fifteen decibels. This sound wall brings it back down to that delta of the fifteen decibels. There's basically two criteria for sound walls, it's sixty-seven decibels or greater than fifteen. We started at forty-five, our greater than fifteen puts us at sixty, we're still quite a ways away from sixty-seven, which is more typical of where sound abatement would be required.
A question for Garth. So some of the findings that we have to make for the variance, for the hardship, the properties characterized been exceptional situation or condition, and for two of those, you indicated that the hardship was the fact that there was a need for this road in terms of demand from population and traffic, also something that we didn't receive any information on. And so my question is for you. Have you, obviously, you've done a traffic demand study, I don't know what that exactly is called, but.
Correct, yes.
And does it show that there is a need for this? And is that something that, I asked, I did ask for that and didn't receive it, and so I, well, you're probably going to say yes, but, but I would have liked to see something, and if you could just elaborate a little bit and try to show me the demand for this is real, especially in this, especially in terms of where it connects then to, connects to Sparks Boulevard, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so as I alluded to earlier, in November two thousand and eleven, we did update our traffic models, and it still showed a need for this road. However, the volume of traffic that we had previously projected that would use this road did decrease, but not enough that, one, eliminated the need for the road, or, two, even dropped it down to four lanes. As a general rule of thumb for what, this is technically called a high-access control arterial, your levels of increases for lanes is basically traffic from zero to twenty thousand is two lanes, twenty to forty thousand is four lanes, forty to sixty thousand is six lanes, and it keeps basically going up in the increments of two. Previous traffic projections based off of the old population numbers showed that six lanes was warranted, and as you approached the northern end of the project, we were actually right at the threshold of needing eight lanes in the future. With the new population numbers based off the economic downturn, those numbers dropped, but we are still comfortably in the middle of that band of forty thousand to sixty thousand, and we're actually between fifty and fifty-five thousand vehicles a day. So we're at the upper part of the band of six lanes. So we did update the traffic numbers, there is still a demand here from a global standpoint, if you just look back at the community, Vista Boulevard, Sparks Boulevard, and Pyramid Highway, all practical purposes, dead end at I-80. Any origins and destinations you have in that part of the community, you're using Interstate eighty. If you look at South Reno, there is no north-south road facilitating that, other than other roads making multiple connections throughout. The western part of the Trucking Meadows has thirteen roads moving north and south. The eastern part of the Trucking Meadows, if you'd use I-580 as a delineator, has three. The eastern part of the Trucking Meadows is severely underserved with north-south connections, and that's what this road specifically addresses.
So you look specifically at trips coming from southern part of town there, up into Sparks and the northern part of Reno?
Those are high-demand usage, and we've done that. In addition, there is also, in the southeast McCarran location, there is also a high demand for traffic in that area, is the origins and destinations. There's a large residential component in there, there's also large employment centers that commuters would be using. So it isn't just the north and the south, it is also the traffic in the middle that currently only has McCarran to go north and south in that small part of the community.
Okay, so for the record, we spoke earlier, which I just disclosed, and when we did, I asked for the study, and you didn't have anything that you could show me. I'm a person that likes to look and see the numbers for myself, and you're standing there telling us all the numbers, and that's fine, but is there a real study that?
There is.
We could see, and how come I couldn't see it?
I was unfortunate, as I said in the email to you, I was literally in reoccurring meetings all afternoon, I was not in my office to be able to access our network to send you the specific study we did specifically for the southeast connector.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reno, there was concerns in a lot of the emails about truck traffic, maybe you can speak about that, and what you anticipate, how much truck traffic will be there? I'm talking eighteen-wheelers and so forth.
Correct, yes, and that is a concern we hear often, certainly a very valid concern from the residents in the area. From RTC's standpoint, we do not own or operate the roadways. So we do not make the determination of what is a truck route, what is not a truck route, enforcing speed limits, doing those sort of operational and ownership-type activities. However, for the design stand, from the design standpoint, the typical truck traffic in this area is four to six percent. We went with six percent just to be more conservative, to give us a more robust pavement section. The concern we hear about is this being used as a potential alternate towards interstate truck traffic, using it to bypass the spaghetti bowl. In conversations I've had with members of the public, I asked them to put themselves in the driver's seat of an eighteen-wheeler, and you're coming through the east Trucking Canyon heading westbound, you get to Sparks Boulevard, you have a decision at that point if your delivery is to the south, let's say in Carson City or Southern California. Let's say you exit Sparks Boulevard from Interstate eighty, you hit a traffic light at those off-ramps, you cross. You cross Interstate 80, you hit a traffic light there. You get to Greg Street, and you hit a traffic light. Now you're onto the southeast connector. You hit a traffic light at Pembroke, Miraloma, South Meadows Parkway, Carrot Avenue, Steamboat Parkway. There will be one that goes in at Rio Wrangler Parkway, it's currently a stop sign, Equestrian, and then you enter the two-lane roundabout. So there, we're at 10 signal stop signs, two-lane roundabout. You'll hit a traffic light at South Virginia. You'll hit a traffic light to, it escapes the name, but the entrance to Summit Sierra. I think we're up to 12 now, and then you'll hit a traffic light making the left-hand turn onto the on-ramp, I-580 southbound. So that's 13, 14 signals, I think, I counted there, at a speed limit posted at 45 miles an hour. Now put yourself back at Interstate 80, you're the truck driver, 65 miles an hour through the spaghetti bowl, a free turn, 65 miles an hour on I-580 south. An over-the-road truck driver who has to get their delivery delivered on time because their customer needs it is going to choose to use the interstate system.
I have more questions. Hey, Garth. Garth, come on back up.
I heard no more questions, sorry.
Yeah, no, I have more questions here. So why isn't there an EIS? What's the deal with that? Can you explain that situation?
Good question, and an EIS determination has not been made yet. That is part of the process that's currently going on with the Army Corps of Engineers.
So if it's a condition, I mean, you have to meet Army Corps of Engineers-
Absolutely.
...conditions, and that's a condition in here.
Absolutely.
So if they say it's required, you'll have to do it.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to make that clear. Okay, thanks.
Garth? Couple of questions. Let's talk about wetlands. Part of the road goes through wetlands. And that was in some of the emails we received, so if we can talk about the wetlands and then talk also about the golf course.
Okay. I presume the wetland question is about what our impacts are, how many there are, what the project plans to mitigate. Okay, so within the corridor that this road was identified on, there's 173 acres of waters of the US. That includes the Truckee River, ponds, marshes, wetlands, anything that the Corps has jurisdiction over. And that's part of the impacts that go into that. As Mr. Setti alluded to earlier, we're impacting 11.2 for math purposes, we'll use 11. So we have 173 out there today. We will impact 11. That brings us down to 162. We are going to mitigate at a two-to-one ratio, so we will mitigate 22 acres. So that puts us up to 184 acres. In addition, because of the floodplain storage, or the flood volume mitigation that we will be doing by lowering the elevation of the road or the, of the ground adjacent to the creek, there's a potential for an additional 140 to 150 acres of wetland to develop in that flood mitigation area. So you are up to 320 to 330 acres in total that could potentially grow as part of this project. Now, we will focus in on our mitigation area, our wetland acre complex that we have. And what was interesting is the previous agenda item talked about Virginia Lake. Our wetland acre complex actually is a proposal to clean the water coming out of Virginia Lake before it gets to Steamboat Creek, and I can elaborate on that if you'd like. But the entire area of the conservation easement that will be protected in perpetuity, there will be an endowment fund that has maintenance responsibilities established to that, will be used to keep this protected and available for habitat of wildlife, open space, natural environment, tremendous increase in the wetland acres in this area.
And part of the, that's white top will be cleaned out, that's part of that endowment?
Yeah.
And does that white top restrict flow when it floods? Is that an issue? Is that-
That, I'd probably have to defer to the experts on that, but I can tell you, because I've physically walked this entire alignment. In fact, part of the earlier questions was having access to Butler Ranch. I've walked through Butler Ranch over two years ago when we had access through there. That white top is thick. It does impede water flow. In fact, one of the earlier coordination items we had with developing this flood model was when you do an aerial flyover, it bounces off the top of the white top. It's that thick. We went out and did actual surveys of the ground and got the true elevation of the existing ground out there versus just aerial flyovers, so there was a discrepancy in there because that white top is so thick.
Matthew Setti, CH2M Hill. More specific to what you're really asking there is the variations in vegetation along here are included in the hydraulic models as a roughness coefficient. So that's how we analyze what types of vegetations are within the floodplain and how those affect both storage and conveyance of flows through those. So it's, the issue of the volume of the plant material is essentially addressed through the roughness coefficient calibration parameters of the hydraulic models, if that helps.
Actually, that was kind of Greek, but-
I hear that a lot.
But out of the 22 acres, is that the only acres that will be, the white top will be removed? How many acres are we, are we talking about removing white top and?
Sure. Matt Setti, CH2M Hill. We have a, we have a weed management plan associated with this that's been developed in conjunction with, our lead consultant's been Linda Nelson, which has done a lot of weed management in the area. This is a fairly extensive document that goes into the time of the year weeds are to be done, and it's broken into weed management during construction and weed management post-construction for the performance period, and then in-perpetuity weed management. So we have many aspects of how to address the weeds on here. This project, both through Nevada Revised Statutes, weed ordinances, will address all noxious weeds, and white top is listed by the state of Nevada as a noxious weed within the entire project boundary. So all of the monoculture of white top in South Butler Ranch will be addressed within our, and then all of the white top that we encounter throughout the entire project area will be addressed. From a design perspective, our greatest concern is our inability to control unmitigated white top further up in the watershed, and that is one of the reasons why we have established the maintenance procedures in perpetuity that will be associated with the conservation easement, is to ensure that in the future we have a mechanism to address white top infestations or other noxious weeds.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wiskey, a follow-up on this. Question that I've had written down is, and Garth, you kind of just touched on it. You heard a discussion earlier about Virginia Lake, and it doesn't have good water flow through it. This proposed project, I'm sure, has a construction calendar of probably two to three years. How, what is being proposed to keep the existing areas of water from becoming stagnant? Because right now, there's water flowing through them even two days ago when we drove the project, and that's what's keeping them from getting stagnant. So how do you propose to keep the wetlands alive?
That's a good question, and it depends on, we're getting into the technical, well, I don't want to say technical weeds here, but we're getting down into the weeds of it, but there are different types of wetlands. There are wetlands that are basically wet all the time, and then there are wetlands that are wet during certain times of the year. So our mitigation plan includes both types of wetlands. So the grade of, or the slope of the bottom of the water flow will dictate where we have water all year round versus other areas where it's in the springtime when the water of Steamboat Creek rises up and it saturates the area for a short period of time and then recedes back down. Those will be, you know, in layman's terms, the dry wetlands. So it's all through the extensive analysis we've done of going out and collecting actual groundwater data as well as flow data in the creeks in the area, and then designing our project such that we reach the criteria for that vegetation to properly establish itself.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wiskey, Matt Setti, CH2M Hill. One of the other elements that we haven't discussed on yet is that in addition to the permanent impacts, we mentioned the 11.23 acres of permanent impacts. We are also permitting through the Corps of Engineers temporary impacts of 13-point-something acres. And those are going to be areas that we understand that we will likely impact, adversely impact the wetland, and therefore we are required to restore those, but we are restoring them in the same location. So therefore, the Corps of Engineers permits those as a temporary impact. For instance, the wetlands at Miraloma, south on the south side of Miraloma, we will de-water those wetlands. And for a while there, there will be no wetlands, and then we will restore the wetlands that are in there. Salvaging, we have a material salvage plan. Many of the willow species and a lot of the other desirable species will be salvaged and used in the new project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reno, talking about Steamboat Creek, you're going to widen the creek, is my understanding, that you'll dig down and the creek will fan out? Is that correct? I mean-
No, if we go back, let me, let me go back to one of our main photos here, the beginning of the project. There's a larger map of this in the lobby for the public review. There's a small area right here that we will actually be in the creek itself. There's an area in this location that we will be modifying the creek, and there is some modifications in this location. The rest of this is taking the creek bank that's now vertical and is shaving that portion back. So we're lowering the floodplain of the creek so we have a more frequent access, but we're not getting into the creek itself except for those couple areas that we have to.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was kind of getting to, that you're spreading, like, when the water rises, it actually floods out instead of being channelized.
Correct, and that was also to deal with erosion and scour issues that currently exist out there and reducing the energy of the flood events within these areas.
So I guess my question generally is, how do you plan to do sediment control in perpetuity? I mean, are you, is there a sediment control plan? And then what if you have to remove sediment? Is there testing for mercury inside that sediment that's being deposited? Maybe you can speak to that.
The elevation, the reason, excuse me, earlier I mentioned that we put pyzometers, which are like groundwater monitoring wells, so we had an understanding of where the groundwater table is out there. We have excavated down to where we will be able to have our plants accessible by, to the water table. We will, the majority of these wetlands that we are talking about will not have open water at the surface of them. And that was also to mitigate the potential for future methylation of mercury that is to be deposited on there. Because we, this project has no control of upstream mercury sources, we will, we do expect that there will be some level of mercury deposited into the floodplain during future flood events.
Are you going to mitigate that? Are you going to test that soils as you remove it?
If, right now, there is no permit requirements to do testing of that soils. It's the same issues that we have all throughout the Truckee system. McCarran Ranch restoration has the same issues. The thing to remember there is, we're talking about mercury concentrations here that, except for those couple areas, are far below ecological or human exposure risk levels. We're not under a requirement by the federal toxic acceptance guidelines or anything like that to actually do anything with this. It's doing this as a proactive environmental protection means.
Okay, thank you.
More questions?
Mr. Chairman, I always have a question. Commissioner Reno, Butler Ranch, they want to continue this. Maybe you can talk about your, I know you briefly talked about it when you came up for your four minutes, but it seems like they retained an engineer kind of late game here. And I just want to make sure that you guys have reached out to them properly, and they have been involved, and they know what's going on there. Thank you.
Chris Wicker, representing RTC. We have an unusual situation here because RTC is a public entity with the right of eminent domain, and we have certain restrictions and timelines we have to follow in order to acquire fee rights to the Butler Ranch, either by purchase or by eminent domain. It's not unheard of that somebody might use opposition to, say, applications for SUPs or variances to try to leverage a better position in a purchase negotiation or eminent domain situation. And it's possible that's happening here. As Garth pointed out, the actual Butler Ranch people have been a part of this and knowledgeable of this for over two years. And this idea that just in the last two weeks have they been able to retain an engineering company to address the issues on the ranch, I think is not telling the whole story because it could have been done a year ago, six months ago, three months ago. We can't control when they choose to hire the engineering company and then come in and say, "You need to delay this while we work out these purchase issues or eminent domain issues with the RTC." It's very important to the RTC that we get no delays. One of those reasons is referenced by the city that after we get our SUP permits and variances, then we have to work with the city to go to FEMA to address the KLOMAR situation. And that's, that could be a long process. It could be a shorter process, hopefully. But that's one of the urgent reasons that we have to get through this process is so that we can go on to the next step, which could be a quite lengthy time. And as we said, we accept the condition imposed by the city of Reno that we have to go to FEMA and get a conditional letter of map revision before we can get our grading permits and things like that. So that's one reason why we have an urgency, and I'm suggesting to you one reason why the Butler Ranch may be here asking for us to be delayed while we negotiate. I think we can negotiate just fine with them without this process being delayed.
Thank you.
May I respond to that? Stephen Molloy, on behalf of Bella Vista Ranch.
Is that okay, Chairman?
I take exception to what counsel has said relative to the Bella Vista Ranch's involvement in this. There have been two meetings that the Bella Vista Ranch has been involved in, substantive meetings with the owners of this ranch. The first meeting was in April of 2003, which was informational in nature. The second meeting was on October 21st, when we found out about this special use permit hearing. Now, the other thing that's really important is there's been no owner's affidavit on this. There's been no resolution of condemnation for this property, and I take exception with the right, the legal right of the RTC to process this application on the Bella Vista Ranch's property without a resolution of condemnation. Once the resolution condemnation is in place, they have a right to move forward on the property. But until such time that is in place, they don't have a right to design, plan, and do anything with the Bella Vista Ranch property. They are taking over 250 acres of this property without any substantive contact with the Bella Vista Ranch. And only when we found out at this particular hearing did we get Summit Engineering involved and try to sort all this stuff out. I provided 15 conditions through our engineers to RTC, and I haven't heard one single word about any of those 15 conditions. Those conditions are not conditions related to the negotiation of the taking of this property by eminent domain. Those are conditions that affect the property, ongoing aggregate and ranching operations, and future operations of the property. Those conditions have nothing to do with the issues in condemnation. They have to do with the issues of how the Bella Vista Ranch is going to continue operations of their farming, ranching, and aggregate pit operations, and protect themselves in that regard while they build this thing for three years. So it's disingenuous for counsel for RTC to say, "Well, these things are negotiation between RTC and the Bella Vista Ranch, and we're trying to leverage them." That's a lot of baloney.
Well, no, no, it's my understanding-
Right.
-that you've been involved every month. I mean, what's-
That is not, that is not the case.
I guess what I work, I sit here and wonder-
I've been in this, I've been in this matter for about two weeks.
Okay, well, I wonder, how can they make an alignment? And nobody knows what the alignment is or what's going on. And it's, I mean, you can't build maps like that without somebody knowing what's going on, especially if some people are-
Our engineers are here, and they didn't hear anything about this alignment.
Okay. I mean, it's public record.
Well, I mean, but doesn't, doesn't the RTC have an obligation to contact the prime owner of this property that's gonna take 250 acres, send them a letter and say, "We are gonna, we are going to take this property and we want to start negotiations"? We haven't had one single letter to that effect. I don't want to get in an argument with the planning commission. I want to address the conditions, the 15 conditions that are operational conditions that are tied with this special use permit for the operation of the Bella Vista Ranch that have nothing to do with how much money the RTC has to pay the Bella Vista Ranch for taking this 250 acres. It has absolutely nothing to do with condemnation.
Let me ask a different question. We'll calm down a little here.
Okay. I just, I have, I've listened to this very quietly and it's like, you know, having a house and somebody's gonna come in and move your house for you and we're watching. All the furniture go out the door.
Okay. Mr. Mollet. The only thing, if there would be a extension or, has to come from RTC and they're not willing to do that.
I understand that.
Okay.
So the only other place it would come from is...
We will go on with the meeting.
What are we gonna do about the 15 conditions? I mean, are we just ignored?
Let me ask, do you mind, Chairman, if I ask a question here?
I think, you know, that's RTC will work with you and I, and my understanding is they already have worked with you.
They've worked with us this last week with Summit Engineering and we gave them 15 conditions. And my understanding was that those conditions were probably okay, but do I see them on the table here today? No. And that's your job to figure out what additional conditions have to be on this project because we're an affected property owner. There's a lot of affected property owners here, but we're the affected property owner. It's on our piece of property they're digging. So we have to address those 15 conditions. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, I didn't need to get into it there, but...
No worries.
The PUD, can you explain what that's all about and access for the PUD near the Butler Ranch area, is my understanding? So this is why I think that, I think people have been noticed and that's my concern. Maybe you can address that.
Yeah, there is currently a PUD for North Butler Ranch and we've taken a look at that PUD and our alignment of the road, as well as our mitigation areas for flood volume, are virtually identical to the locations that the PUD had identified for the roadway as well as their mitigation. So for impacts for future use, their footprint of developable space is virtually the same. There's a slight change at the south end of North Butler Ranch for the reduction, but they gain it on the north end of Butler Ranch, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, since Garth is up at the microphone, I have a question for him, please.
Go ahead.
Garth, did we, did we hear testimony earlier that several test holes, almost in the neighbor of 200, have been taken off of the Butler Ranch over the last couple of years?
The exact number, I'd have to go back and add up, but part of our preliminary work...
Let me ask you this, is there more than 100 holes, do you think?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay.
As well as test pits, which are large areas of excavation that we, that we did on their property with their permission.
Over the last 24 months?
Correct.
So to hear Mr. Mollet stand up and say he knew nothing about it just means that he didn't know anything about it. It doesn't mean that the owners of the property didn't know anything about it. Am I making a correct...
I would, I would tend to agree with that. I personally met with Mr. Brett Butler out on his property approximately right around a year ago. Might have been just over a year ago. I personally met with him on property to discuss aspects of what the project entailed.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Other questions? Discussion?
I'll discuss. You know, as I looked at this project, I went out and it was just, it was just me and Garth and Jeff there. We toured the site yesterday. And as I looked at it, I drilled them. Believe me, I drilled them about everything. They can, they can testify to that. I asked them questions about increased traffic, you know, floodplain, you name it. I think I asked everything I could think of. I did my homework, for sure. And as I look at this project, I think that RTC has done their homework. I'll be honest, I really think that they have done everything they can to make this thing work. And they've mitigated it, they've encapsulated the mercury, they've done everything to make this a viable, good project for the community. And, I mean, that's kind of my thoughts. I don't know what the rest of the commissioners think, but that's kind of how I view this. And I understand there are a lot of concerns for the public. Believe me, I understand that. But I do think that RTC has done their due diligence here.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wiskey. Looking at what the request is, special use permit for allowing grading with fills 10 feet or more, disturbance of a major drainage way, and protection of significant hydrological I believe also, as Commissioner Reno said, that RTC has done their homework, that for the public as a whole, they have addressed all the issues, not just the adjacent neighbors, but all of the, they've taken into consideration all of the residents of Reno, Sparks and Washoe County that will be using this road. And I can make all those findings. After listening to more discussion this evening, I can now make all of the findings for the variances that I could not make earlier. And I will be voting in favor of this proposed motion.
Commissioner Stapleton.
Following on the comments from my fellow commissioners, I also have a lot of concerns and have heard the concerns of the community. And I do also think that RTC has done their due diligence. And as far as the special use permits, I can make the finding, the findings for the variants. You know, I trust that this modeling is real and that in terms of the surface elevation, that the mitigation that they're doing is real to make sure that that's, that the water surface elevation is not gonna be raised. And I'm, you know, trusting in all the science and explanations that I heard tonight. In terms of allowing encroachment in a floodway, this is the one that I have a little bit of an issue with. I don't see what the hardship is, even if there's a need in really having to do this. And we've gone, you know, we've talked for hours tonight about all of the issues with putting this road in the floodway and all of the mitigation. And there's so much work and there's an explanation for everything and still, you know, I don't know what the hardship is and why we have to do it there. And I, you know, I remember there was, you know, when there was discussion of all these different alignments and that there's an explanation for that too. And so I'm struggling with that a little bit of why, of why we're doing this in the floodway still. And so I have an issue with that, but I'm struggling with that. So I don't know if anyone else have any, has any comments on that, but as far as the rest of the, them, I can make the findings.
Okay. After sitting on the board for almost seven years and I don't know how many projects have come up where we've talked about flooding, where residents are very concerned about that and everything, when we get to a project like this, and again, I agree, I think that RTC has done their homework. I think that this will make it better. Not that we won't have floods, but I think that part of their design will eliminate as much flooding as we've had before. So again, I can support both the special use permit and both variances.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wiskey, may I address Commissioner Stapleton's request for discussion?
Sure.
Yeah. Tell me what the hardship is.
Yeah, I mean, I sat in on the 2030 Regional Committee back in the early 2000s. And I know three different roadways were proposed and moved forward for approval. This is not about the roadway, because the roadway's already been approved. The benefit of seeing this design and the modeling, which I have to trust the engineers, we've got engineers from different entities, well-educated engineers who have worked on this and designed it to mitigate and not make the flood conditions worse. But we actually heard this evening that in some cases, it may, it will drop it, but the City of Reno Flood Engineer even said that it will not raise it above the zero level now for anybody. And yet, we've seen models and pictures that it shows where it's actually going to decrease it in that. To me, that's, that's a benefit, that's the benefit to putting it into this floodway because without it, we wouldn't be redesigning the floodway to handle the additional waters. That's what changed my mind tonight. And I'm, that's what has allowed me to make the variance, that finding going through the floodway. Because we've got areas now that are in the, away from the residences that are gonna take more water than what they currently do. That work wouldn't be taking place without this project. That's my opinion. I don't know if it changes, helps you or not. I don't want to change your opinion. I just want to help you make a decision, one way or the other.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Commissioner Stapleton. And I don't, I'm not gonna, yeah, I'm not gonna debate what you said, but it doesn't get to really the question for me. So I appreciate that.
More discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And, yeah, we should, the motion should be based on a special use permit and then each variance individually.
Individually? You don't want to, okay. In the case of LDC 1400015 Southeast Connector Phase 2, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit. And I can make all the findings.
Have a motion.
Commissioner Wiskey, I will second it and I can make all of the findings as I discussed earlier.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify that, subject to the conditions, staff conditions as well.
Subject to the staff conditions as well.
With the second.
All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
All against? Show a pass four to zero. Motion for the variance?
I'll make a motion. In the case of LDC 1400015 Southeast Connector Phase 2, request for disturbance of a major drainage way, I can make that variance request.
I'll second, Commissioner Wiskey, I will second that.
Excuse, excuse. The variance request is for encroachment of the floodway and for raising the critical flood zone one, or the two variances.
Sorry, am I reading that wrong here? Do you want to put both of them together? I was gonna do them separate.
Separate.
Disturbance of a major drainage way. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Disturbance of a major drainage way, protection of significant hydrological resources in cooperative planning area overlay district.
Commissioner Wiskey, I will second that. Because you're...
Is that right?
For the record, we're doing the...
We already did the special...
It's the one special use permit with three...
It's one special use permit.
There are two separate variances.
Just do a whole new motion here. In the case of LDC 1400015 Southeast Connector Phase 2, I move to approve the variance to allow encroachment in a floodway. What? And I can make all the findings. Subject to conditions by staff.
Commissioner Wiskey, I will second that variance motion and I can make all of the findings.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose?
Nay.
The motion passes three to one. Next motion?
Next motion. In the case of LDC 1400015 Southeast Connector Phase 2, a variance to raise the water surface elevation in a portion of the critical flood zone one to construct the Southeast Connector Regional Roadway, I can make all the findings and subject to conditions by staff.
Mr. Chairman Wiskey, I can second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? That passes four to zero. Any action taken by the Planning Commission on a tentative map, special use permit, variance, or skyway is final unless appealed. Any person aggrieved by the decision may file an appeal. Each person in a team must make his or her own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the county clerk within 10 days of the Planning Commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the City Council with the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. Just for the clarity of the record, if we could go back, we did the one, the commission did the one special use permit for all. If we could break that up into the three special use permits, just so that we have all three of those on the record.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
In the case of LDC 1400015 Southeast Connector Phase 2, I move to approve the special use permit to allow grading with fills of 10 feet or more. And I can make all the findings. Subject to conditions by staff.
Commissioner Wiskey, second. And I can make all of the findings.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against? Passes four to zero.
In the case of LDC 1400015 Southeast Connector Phase 2, I move to approve the special use permit for disturbance of a major drainage way. Subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
Have a motion.
Commissioner Wiskey, second. I can make all of the findings.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes four to zero.
In the case of LDC 1400015 Southeast Connector Phase 2, I move to approve the special use permit to allow protection of the significant hydraulic resources in the cooperative planning area overlay district. Applicable, subject to, to all staff...
Conditions.
Conditions. There you go. Thank you. Too many motions here. And I can make all the findings.
Have a motion.
Commissioner Wiskey, I will second that and I can make all of the findings.
Have a motion and a second. Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next on the agenda is LDC 14... Five-minute break? Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break. LDC 14-00015. And the first motion that was made, we need to extract that or...
Yeah, withdraw that motion.
Withdraw that motion.
Commissioner Reno, in the case of LDC 140051 Southeast Connector Phase Two, I'm gonna withdraw the motion I made previously.
On the, just for clarification, on the first SUP...
Just for the special use permit.
And Commissioner Wiskey, I seconded that motion. I will withdraw my second also on that first SUP motion.
Thank you. We don't know, need to withdraw our votes, do we?
And then, yeah, and then just vote on the...
A new motion?
That it's withdrawn and vote. And you're done.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we, that we take a vote on confirming that that motion has been withdrawn.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second to withdraw the very first SUP motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Four to zero, Michelle. All right.
I need to make a new motion, right?
No.
No, you're good.
Just withdraw. LDC 14-0001, master plan amendments to the TODD boundaries and secondary corridor.
I would like to make a motion right now. Now that this item is open, Mr. Chair.
It's not open. We haven't even had the presenter yet.
I know, but you opened the item, right?
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion. You want to hear me out?
Why, how can you make a motion if we haven't even heard the project?
I can make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we continue this item so that we can ensure to have a robust and complete discussion on this since we've worked for so long on it and it's so important.
Is there a second? Hearing done. Claudia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me. Good evening, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. So tonight before you is just the master plan portion. This isn't the standards, this isn't the zone change, so we're just looking at master plan policy. Since your workshops, the regional plan has been updated, amending some of the FAR and density requirements as reflected in these changes. So I am gonna go through each one of the TODDs. There, Lee Gibson from the RTC is here to answer any technical transit questions or if you have any questions about RTC support on the TODD corridors. Also is Ken Crater, who has issues, I think, or concerns about a couple of the TODD corridors. So as we're going through the TODD corridors, I'm fine with they want to jump in during the presentation on those TODD corridors or if you want me to go all the way through all of them and then come back to each one. It's up to you. Do you want to handle each one individually? There's five.
Yeah.
Each one individually, okay. So we'll start on the West Fourth Street TOD. In this area, we are looking at... Let me get to my notes here. The, starting on the far west portion of the, of the West Fourth Street TOD, out by Gold Ranch, we're looking at, actually, let me use this map. That's fine, Michelle. The hatched area is proposed to be removed from the City of Reno sphere of influence. Those are areas that are currently in the sphere and were brought forward for annexation during our annexation program last year. And City Council denied the request for annexation on those and directed staff to move forward with removing those from the sphere of influence from the City of Reno. We have discussed this with city, with Washto County, sorry, and they are also in support of that. There's also, there's been a number of property owners out there who have requested that. The Gold Ranch area, shown in this tan color here, is proposed to go into the Western Gateway Regional Center, which is where the Boomtown Casino is located. That is the Western Gateway Regional Center. That's the only part that is proposed to stay MU. The rest of the area is proposed to go back to standard City of Reno land use designations. So urban residential, commercial, and then the green as parks, recreation, open space, and the yellow as single-family residential. The area up in here, these couple of little parcels up in the corner, there was a gentleman here earlier who prefers the single-family land use designation to the mixed-use land use designation or the TODD corridor land use designation. However, his ultimate desire is to be removed from the sphere of influence from the City of Reno. He realizes that's not in the scope of this project, but that is his ultimate request. Moving further east in, on the West Fourth Street corridor. And this is reflecting the discussions from the workshops that the Planning Commission has held. The section of the West Fourth Street TOD between McCarran Boulevard and the IED on-ramp has very limited transit right now. There is quite a bit of industrial development out there in the woodland area right in here. There has been some interest in residential development along Fourth Street and some development in industrial and commercial along there, as well as the river end down at the west end. So it seems appropriate to keep the mixed-use designations out there, but to introduce, this is the first time you've seen this tonight, is the concept of the secondary corridor. What that has is removing the FAR requirement and the density requirement, however maintains the building orientation and parking orientation. So that when and if development does occur out there, we have the framework of the development ready for transit when and if it does come out there. I think that's all I have to say. Any questions on the secondary corridor out in that area before I move on?
Say that one more time, please, Commissioner Wiskey.
Okay, all right. So the secondary corridor in this area, in any area, removes the requirement for the FAR, the floor area ratio and the density. It ultimately maintain, and we're not talking about design standards in this, we're just doing policy. It would ultimately remove FAR and density, but maintain building orientation, pedestrian access, and parking locations. So parking to the side or the rear would maintain, would stay there. So even if you're not building a .75 or 1.0 FAR, your buildings are still placed up front. So ultimately, it's gonna be more transit oriented when those higher density intensities come in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The western, I'm sorry, eastern portion, so from McCarran to Keystone, is proposed to remain the same as the, as a primary corridor. However, we are amending the FAR and density requirements to match the, what is placed in the regional plan, sorry, I'm getting tired too, in the regional plan, being 18 units to the acre and .25 in the corridor with .75 near transit stop. There are no rapid transit stops out in this area at that, at this time, or no station areas at that time out in this area. So it does, it does request the increase of density as, as any station areas are developed out in that area. Just to show back out to the western, West Fourth, further west on West Fourth Street TOD. In the land use plan for the Western Gateway Regional Center, this is the area that's gonna be included into the Western Gateway. This is the Gold Ranch area right in here and then the, the large parcels to the south, all with easy access onto the Frontage Road and reasonable topography for development. So those are the ones to be included in the Western Gateway Regional Center plan. That concludes the West Fourth Street TOD and Western Gateway Regional Center amendments. If you have any questions on those or if anybody from the audience has anything?
Ken, Ken, you want to come up? The mic?
Thank you. For the record, Ken Crater, I just thought it'd be good, if we're on Fourth, I could give you my comments right now on that section of the TOD. First of all, there's some properties with some steep slopes in this Fourth Street TOD, West Fourth Street TOD. In particular, for example, my company owns some property on Summit Ridge Drive and we previously had approval on that property for a 22-unit townhome project. And my, my comment on this is it would be good if the density calculations on those types of properties were based on the slope calculation formulas that the City of Reno uses. And I'm just gonna give you a little example is, in fact, here's a picture of, of the slope map. If you base the density of the approved project, the 22 units on the entire two-acre parcel, it only comes out to 11 dwelling units per acre. But if you base it on the developable area, which is only 1.4 acres, because we can't develop on these steep slopes, it comes out to about 16 dwelling units per acre. So you can see there's quite a variation there. So I guess my question for staff, is there a way to have that policy be worded based on developable area and not just gross acreage?
That is already how we do it.
Perfect. And then, second, on the West Fourth Street TOD, if you look at page 12 of that TOD, Policy Two, Section H. West Fourth Street right now is designated by the Regional Transportation Commission as a moderate access control arterial in the portion of the plan that will remain in the TOD. However, in that policy, it calls out for that section to now become a high-access control arterial. Well, obviously, there's been a lot of thought through the years put into the regional transportation plan by the Regional Transportation Commission, input by the City of Reno. And it seems to me that that area ought to be consistent with the RTC regional transportation plan and remain a moderate access control arterial in terms of access. With that strike to, I think we're, we're creating a situation that creates a hardship for those property owners. And furthermore, I don't think there's a rational nexus in having that as a high-access control arterial in the policy plan and the master plan, but identified as a moderate access control arterial in the regional transportation plan. So I'm just looking for a little consistency there. And then, my final thing on the West Fourth Street TOD, again, page 12, Policy Six, Section A, talking about orientation to sidewalks. This previously applied only to the eastern plan area and tourist commercial areas, but now is written it will apply to all areas. And I just want to confirm with staff that that's truly the intent, because that's different from how that was previously written. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Claudia? Claudia?
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. Regarding...
Wait a minute. Since Ken got up there, we have Michael... Are you, are you Michael in the back? Mike? Oh.
No, I'm Mr. Fuchik, I was the second speaker before.
Oh, okay. Well, okay, I'll read this later then.
So regarding the high-access control for all new development, that's existing wording, but we would agree that we should be in conformance with RTC's plan. So we would look at that and if it's moderate, that I would recommend that we be consistent with that. We can, it's existing wording that's in the, in the plan right now. But I'm fine, staff would be fine with amending that to be consistent with RTC.
Okay.
And then the other comment. Buildings should be oriented to the sidewalk to provide a prominent pedestrian access and the development of public space along the street frontage should be encouraged. I would say that that was the intent. Wish to have that throughout the area.
Commissioner Wiskey, Claudia, isn't that what we've been trying to do with all the TODDs?
Yes.
Even when we were talking about East Fourth Street and we got into some good discussions, Commissioner Stapleton started a couple of them regarding setbacks and orientation and corners and walkways and things like that. So this, this really is following the flow that we had already started to establish from TODD corridor to TODD corridor, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Sorry, that was loud. Making you, are we ready for East Fourth?
Go.
All right, so on East Fourth. Just a few changes in this. Angela left, Angela had some comments on this. So as I said on all of them, we are matching the density and intensity requirements that were amended to put into the regional plan. So 18 units per acre, typically in transit, or in station areas. For the East Fourth Street, it's outside of the secondary corridor is 18 units to the acre. New development adjacent to East Fourth and East Sixth is a minimum of .75. So if you're adjacent to one of those arterials, you're at .75 and everything else is a .25. And I'll show you what we've done on the map. Again, this is the East Fourth Street corridor. The blue remaining is the primary transit corridor. The residential area, it's predominantly single-family residential up in this area. North of Sixth and west of Sutro is single-family. And we had some participants in the neighborhood meetings requesting that that remain as a secondary corridor, so to remove that density requirement up in that area. So you'd still have the building orientation, pedestrian orientation, but you're gonna be removing the density and FAR requirement. So it gives them the opportunity to expand a higher density, but it's not mandatory up in that area.
Can I ask a question on that one?
Sure.
Mr. Stapleton, are you talking about that little corner of brown right there on Wells and... I think I remember it differently and I'm also familiar with that area. I actually went and looked at it because I was concerned about this. And that's not, well, at least that corner of Wells and... And that's not, well, at least that corner of Wells and, what is that, Sixth? That's not residential right there.
Wells and, no, that's a gas station.
Right. So why are we doing it on that corner one?
To keep that block consistent in that area. I'm not sure with the amount of access on that corner, I'm not sure high-density intensity would work very well with driveway spacing and access to the freeway right there. It's a very short area in there. I'm not sure if we would want to encourage higher density in that, right on that block right there. And then there were, I want to say, two homeowners from that area, from this area back in here, who wanted to maintain the lower densities. Again, it's MU, it's secondary corridor, they have the ability to build higher density, but it's not mandatory.
I don't know if I'm comfortable with that for that corner parcel, but the other ones, I am. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
For the gas station?
Are you talking specifically about Wells and Sixth?
Yeah, because that's, it's two main, I mean, that's two main, that's not residential there on that corner.
No, not in the corner, it's not.
Right now, it's vacant lot, right?
Wells and Sixth is a gas station, I believe.
Yes.
The gas station.
On that corner?
And then there's a Denny's.
No, that's a vacant lot right there.
Motel Six.
Oh, are you, are you talking on the south side of Sixth? South side of Sixth, Sixth is vacant.
Oh, okay, so this is the gas station?
That's a gas station.
In between Sixth and the freeway?
Yep.
Yes.
And a motel.
I would definitely not recommend secondary corridor on the south side of Sixth.
No.
Okay, thank you.
And then also over in the east of the freeway, number of property owners, there's a lot of industrial development over there, a few mobile home parks, there's been some reinvestment on the south side of Fourth Street, so there's some interest in redevelopment over in that area. However, because of access and visibility in that area, we didn't feel that it was necessary to require the high-density intensity in that, in that little pocket. We did discuss this at previous workshops as well.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Reno, but still, because of the transit, or the node here, that, still the FAR will go up on that, correct?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The FAR will go up around the, the node for the transit area, even in the secondary corridor? Secondary, yeah, corridor? I, I just want to make sure that's clear. It's .75, is that correct?
No, the second, so that's outside of the secondary corridors. It goes to the .75 near a transit station. So this isn't in a secondary corridor, so it's going to be .25. I'm sorry, secondary corridor, so there won't be any. I'm sorry.
There won't be any, okay.
Yeah, which gives them the ability, they can still do it, it's just not mandatory.
Gotcha.
Any other questions on that one? I don't know if anybody in the audience has questions on East Fourth Street?
Bill?
Okay.
Commissioners, do you have questions? All right, next.
Okay, Mill Street. So Mill, we're looking at a minimum density of 18 units per acre in the primary. Intensity should be lowered from 1.0 to .75 along Mill Street, and that would be west of the freeway, and density lowered from 30 to 18. And then we also have a secondary established in there that was raised by Angela Foose at earlier workshops. So we have the, the blue is the primary corridor, so that's from Kitski to the freeway, and then this long parcel that's in there, the transit station, or the, I'm sorry, the River Landing at Mill, which is the casino and the surrounding property, is maintained, and then the secondary corridor is down along Terminal and on Mill east of the freeway. So the same concept, they have the minimum density and intensity along here, and then building orientation and all of it, but no FAR and density requirement over on Terminal.
That's what you're talking about on page four, Policy Four? Is that what you're talking about? Never mind. Ignore me.
Page five of the staff report?
Commissioner Reno, no, why, why are we reducing the density along Mill Street? I don't, I don't understand why we're going from 30 down to 18. Don't we want higher density there?
We do, it's a minimum. So it was minimum 30, the regional plan was amended to be a minimum of 18, so we lowered that to be consistent with the regional plan.
Gotcha.
They can still build to 30, but the minimum is 18.
Okay.
Ken?
No. Fairly simple change on South Virginia. And again, this is just the, the policy, so we'll come back and look at the detailed standards when we bring back the code amendment. But in the northern section, let me put up a map. The northern section's going to be between the downtown Reno Regional Center and the Meadowwood, or I'm sorry, the Convention Regional Center. This is the main corridor for the bus rapid transit system. So this would be, I would say, our highest priority of our Todd corridors. And in the northern section, we kept the density at 18 units per acre adjacent to South Virginia, and .75 for properties adjacent to South Virginia. And then in the southern portion, sorry. The southern portion of the South Virginia Transit Corridor, we are proposing to put to a secondary corridor with no minimum FAR or density should be required south of the Convention Regional Center until rapid transit stations or similar facilities are constructed in that area. So when RTC decides that it's appropriate to expand or enhance the transit system that, down in that area and station areas are constructed, we would recommend that the density intensity be extended down to that far, but to not have it in place at this time, but to still establish the design standards, which we will discuss in the text amendments in the future, but to keep that building orientation in place so that when those are, when the transit comes in, or transit's enhanced, and development comes in, those are matched up, and we have the transit development already in place with opportunities for density and intensity to come in at that time. Are we good? South Virginia?
Yeah. All the names and stuff for the commissioners, that's all going to be changed too?
Yes, I saw that Kimberly's still on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you have Jason as vice chair?
Yes, we'll have that all corrected.
Okay.
DAGN, what, DAGNY?
What's that?
No.
Oh, yes, I know, I have to change the format on yours. All of that will be corrected. Okay, North Virginia?
Wait, wait, I have a comment really quick on that, sorry.
That's all right.
Commissioner Reno, on page eight?
Page eight of?
Yeah, of the South Virginia Todd.
Okay.
I don't understand why you have an old picture, I mean, we're updating this. Can it be updated, the aerial, to include the Plum Lane Crossing? Because isn't there a whole bunch of development along, I'm sure there, I know there is, in fact, it's on the, it's on the front of the cover.
That's true, it is. Sure, we can update the photo.
Yeah, just because we're updating it.
We also need a photo of the Mill Street Todd, we just haven't come up with a good one yet.
Okay.
Okay. We can do that. Is that all?
No, I have one other comment, going back to the, the visual effects. On page 12, there's this blues, the different colors of blues, and I was kind of confused exactly where the limits of everything was.
So page 12 is the Midtown District?
Yeah.
And we?
It's just because there's like a blue and then a lighter blue and a green.
Right, so that was, I'm not sure, I don't think you were on the planning commission when that came through. So those are the two different districts, that's the commercial district and the residential district of the Midtown overall station area, and?
But it looks like there's an overlay, right?
There is.
And that's where, I, I think it's the colors, I'm not seeing the overlay. The South Virginia Transit Corridor.
Well, I'm sorry, it's not technically an overlay, it's just different districts within the station area. So they're identified in here, and then the standards are called out within the ordinance for each area.
Okay. As long as it's clear somewhere, so, perfect, thanks.
And we were not looking at changing anything on Midtown since that went through its own process, which was just approved at City Council. North Virginia. We have some changes up there. So for what's remaining in the North Virginia Todd, we are looking at designating the entire corridor as a secondary corridor. So no FAR and no density requirement up in that area until rapid transit or some other similar form of transit comes up to that area. At the request of Washoe County, we are looking at removing Grandview Terrace, also known as Black Springs, up in this area. So that would be removed from the city of Reno sphere of influence and reverts back to Washoe County's jurisdiction. And that would remain, would not form any islands as it connects right there into Washoe County. So that's going to be coming out of the transit corridor and out of the sphere of influence. Ms. Shaw, can you zoom in a bit, please? So looking up in the Stead area, we are looking at removing quite a bit of this area from the transit corridor. Up near the airport, pulling out the university land and the industrial land up in that area, the gray going back to industrial, blue going to public facility. There is some Habitat for Humanity housing in there, we're proposing that to go back to mixed residential. A lot of existing housing in this area going back to mixed residential. We sent out thousands of postcards, and they all called me, asking questions about this, and they all had no idea that they had the mixed-use zoning designation, and we're quite thrilled with being removed from this area, from the transit corridor. Parks Recreation for the Dorothy McElendon Park up there. This is a commercial hub in there, so putting that back to urban residential, commercial, and mixed residential for all the existing housing on the east side of Stead Boulevard. Moving down the corridor, this is a little pocket of industrial that's completely built out at industrial, and it has had numerous business license issues and development issues in that area, and a number of the property owners have requested that that area come out of the Todd corridor, and it would go back to industrial. This is Amber Meadows, a portion of Amber Meadows that you saw before you, to remove that portion of, remove this portion from the transit corridor. They had housing, the lots developed next door, or mapped next door, this area, they asked to come out of it, there's a large drainage way, it's just on the west side of Grandview Terrace. Planning Commission, City Council approved that to come out, they would like, now like to come back in to the transit quarter, they miss it so much. The, and then this is the Grandview Terrace here, coming out of the sphere of influence. And then this intersection here of the freeway and Lemon, that was, that property owner is requesting to come out of the Todd corridor, and it's, it's very freeway-oriented, it's surrounded by Lemon and the off-ramp, so it's really not appropriate for transit quarter, anyway, transit quarter development in that area. This is a pocket of residential development down there, existing residential development that, again, they were shocked that they were even in the mixed-use development in the Todd when they called, and were quite pleased. I've probably talked to a dozen, 15 property owners up in there that were all happy to be removed from the transit quarter. This is an established subdivision down here, sort of a subdivision, it's an overall lease, it's one large parcel, but it's fairly built out, and they're also requesting to come out of the Todd corridor, which seems appropriate. Their density, though, would trigger the urban residential, commercial land use designation. I think I covered all of that. I know Mr. Crater has comments on this topic, and as I said, the rest of the Todd corridor proposing to go to secondary corridor throughout the rest of the corridor, until the time when transit is enhanced up in that area.
Again, for the record, Ken Crater, I have two comments that are kind of the same on the North Virginia Street Todd. And the first comment is in regards to page three, the first paragraph at the top of the page. It's talking about buildings should be placed out or near the streets, that they are oriented to transit and pedestrians, but then it goes on to say that no parking shall be allowed in front of buildings, it should be located in the rear side, inside, or underground of buildings. We had this discussion at our last meeting on the standards, and I think you all know that there is a great shortage of prime industrial property in the Truckee Meadows area, and that the Regional Planning Agency has actually been doing a study to identify industrial areas within our community to continue us to allow to diversify our economy. And I have no issue whatsoever, whatsoever, of parking within the primary portion of the corridor, but it seems to me in these secondary corridors, and this is an example here, you've got the Golden Valley industrial in this area, and this is property that Dermity now owns, which is just ripe for industrial. And as you look across the street, this is all older light industrial, and as you head on towards Stead, there's a lot more industrial property. And what's planned for this property here in Lemon Valley, which is the same as a lot of other things that we're looking at in the community right now, it's one of the few areas in town where you can put a big box. There's, the biggest shortage we have for industrial is where you can develop the six, seven, eight hundred million square foot boxes to bring in the new urban outfitter-type developments into Reno. And it's, you just can't build a large box building that's a transload facility, which means you have docks on side if you can't park all the way around the building. You're talking a building that's 520 feet by 1,200 feet, and not just the trailer parking, but the employees, if you had to park only in, you know, either end of the building and have to walk that long distance to get to your portion of the facility, it just doesn't work for industrial. However, on the other hand, you can certainly design these projects with great pedestrian access. In fact, we've already met with the RTC staff, the transit staff, about putting a bus stop at this location. You can see that we can develop a pedestrian path around not just this building, but all the buildings to tie it in for walking, exercise, as well as access to and from the street. So I think it's critical for our community that we allow that parking, at least in the industrial areas, in front of these buildings within the secondary Todd. Primary, not an issue, there we want to orient those buildings to the street, but we need to be able to reverse fire our economy in these areas. And again, this is a great location to build this type of industrial development, and so I would ask that we consider allowing that parking in front of buildings within this North Virginia Todd where there are some great industrial, in fact, Amber Meadows, that's why they're interested in coming back in, is the potential for industrial development on that site. So I think that's a critical item. And then along the same lines, same thing on page five of the North Virginia's Todd, that's the actual policy, Seven, Section A, again, to allow parking in front of buildings in secondary Tods. Maybe it's just tied into industrial projects, but it's something that needs to happen in this community with this update to the master plan. And that's all I have, thank you. Thank you.
And my response to that would be? Let me get to the roadmap here. Sorry, just have to find his property on the overall map. Can you zoom in, please? Thank you. So, this is, this is the property that he was discussing up there on the, on the north side of North Virginia Street. And it's probably a great industrial project and maybe the parking should be in front, but it shouldn't be in the Todd. If, if we take away building orientation and the FAR and the density, it's not a Todd development anymore. It's not even close. So, I would recommend if, if that's the direction that the planning commission thinks that that area should be developed in, I don't think it should be in the Transit Corridor. And maybe industrial would be more appropriate for that area.
Can you take that out of the Todd?
We'd probably look at taking it out all the way up to the freeway, so the property behind it as well. Trying to think on noticing. We would, we would have to re-notice the North Virginia Todd, but we can do that. We can pull this one out separately and redo it.
I would suggest it. You know, I, either that or make a, make an exception in the Todd that if you're an industrial zone, then, or you bring an industrial building in that you've, and that's going to change Todd altogether. I mean, you don't have it, you're right. You don't have a Todd if you do that.
Yeah. Which isn't a bad thing. Maybe it's just not appropriate for it.
Right. And we've found that in several locations.
Right.
And, and made adjustments to it. And that's what's been taking 18 to 24 months to accomplish, you know, through discussion and meetings and workshops. So, I'm, I would be in favor of pulling that out of the Todd.
Commissioner Stapleton, didn't we have this debate last time?
Maybe you got this piece of property that I'm holding.
Okay.
It was discussed, yes. I think my comment was the same. If you remove all elements of it, really all you're doing is avoiding a special use permit in the end. A potential special use permit.
Where's the property again on that?
Um, it's right about where the, where the ST is.
Oh, so if you were going to take that, just that property out, it would be like a little hole.
Right. You'd still have some between it and the freeway, which I think is the cemetery?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the cemetery. Which is high density in a certain way, I guess.
If we do that, Claudia, Commissioner Wiskey, if we do that, do we run into any adjacency issues?
It may create adjacency requirements, in which case it may trigger a special use permit to do the development. I don't know. I haven't analyzed if, what we would have to pull out to pull out that property, but it may trigger a special use permit.
Which I think would be fair after what we've just learned about residential adjacency and old industrial properties and moving them around from counties to cities and cities to counties. I would like some more information on that the next time you bring this particular one before us and to know whether or not we're going to pull it out of the Todd, which appears to be a good thing. But is there any negative reaction to it because of adjacency? Does that make sense to you?
It does.
And I just, for once, I'm trying.
I don't know if I would call it negative. I think that was my facial expression. I don't know if I'd call it negative, a, a change of situation.
To me, it could be negative if we have to go through, you know, several meetings of adjacency and somebody wanting to build on their industrial property.
Right. The idea with the Transit Corridors is so many of the special use permit requirements were removed because we put in a set of standards. If we remove that set of standards, then in theory, the special use permit comes back under the Transit Corridor. Somebody can go in and see specifically how the development's going to occur if that goes away.
I guess what I want to look at is if it's going to take an SUP for the property owner to develop or to develop an industrial or to, at the time, they have a client pull it out of a Todd Corridor, it's still going to cost them the same amount of money, right? If we were to leave it in a Todd and they said, hey, we want to change this, it's just like any other.
I see what you're saying, yes.
So.
Yeah.
But I think the issue still comes if we should pull it out. You know, if that, pull that out of the Todd. And the fact that, you know, if it's not going to be part of the standards.
I don't disagree with you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Reno, you know, I, I think we should leave it. I'll disagree with Commissioner Wiskey. I think it should just be left alone. And if they want an exception, they come in for a special use permit for that exception, right? Is that my understanding, even if it's in the?
That would be an option.
Yeah. If it's in the Todd, then they have to come in for a special use permit. And then we can look at it on an individual basis, but by taking it out now, I think we're just making an exception where I think we need to keep these corridors intact. So, I, I would say that they should come forward and ask for a special use permit. And we can look at them piece by piece, but they should remain in the Todd.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I would agree with that. I think pointed out now could lead to some, some issues. And right now, if we leave it as is, it's probably a better thing that we look at each individual project on a case-by-case basis. So, I'm comfortable with that SUP process.
So, to leave it in, is what you're saying? Leave it in the Todd?
Go ahead. Come on up, Ken.
But this is the Claudia. I don't believe we have a special use permit process in place right now for the issue of parking in front of buildings. We have very, variations in there to allow for building orientation and I think floor area ratio, where you can do a site plan review or you can add additional landscaping or pedestrian amenities. But I don't think we have that clause built in right now for a use permit to deal with this specific issue.
I'm not sure on the standard right now. This was a policy review. And when we look at the text, we can review that at that time.
So, do we make a motion on that? I mean, is this just, just a direction that we're giving Claudia? What's the?
This is Commissioner Stapleton. I would agree with Commissioners Wosley and Reno in terms of leaving it in, but maybe making sure we, for the next part of this, make sure there's a mechanism to review it if have a special use permit.
I'm sorry. Can you speak up?
Hi. Commissioner Stapleton, I agree with Commissioners Wosley and Reno about leaving it in, but just making sure that.
To review that issue when we bring back the text amendment?
Yes, that.
Okay. We can do that.
I just, yes.
And that's all I have?
Okay. Any more discussion? A motion?
That's good. In the case of LDC 1400001, master plan amendment, Todd boundaries, secondary corridors. Based upon compliance with applicable considerations, I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution and recommend the city council do the same subject to conformance review by the regional planning agency and those items we discussed here. Do I include that in the motion?
I don't think we had any changes.
We had, we had a small.
I, I think you made a couple.
Oh, I did. Oh, that's right. Yes, yes. Sorry.
And the conditions discussed here. And I can make all the findings?
Commissioner Stapleton, second the motion. I can make the findings.
Have a motion or a second. All that agree, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Five to zero. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Oh, I need to read in, I'm sorry. I have one statement. Somebody, Michael Pierzek, I own 100 Morton Lane in Verde, APO 038-891-03, 05 and 06, and I'd like to have my property that is the sphere of influence to be removed from the boundary and placed in the Washoe County zoning land use and also parcel 038821-16 back to the Washoe County land use. Thank you.
I, that was the one I discussed out in Verde. So, that's marked on the map and noted if we ever amend the sphere in that area.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is election of a vice chair for possible action. Do I have any nominees?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Commissioner Dagney Stapleton for vice chair.
I'll second that nomination, Commissioner Reno.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Nope. You don't give a say. It's done. Okay.
No, you're supposed to jump up and down and clap your hands. Welcome. Thanks, Dagney.
Thank you. Looking forward to it, Mr. Chair.
What's that?
I said, thank you, looking forward to it, Mr. Chair.
Truckee Meadow Regional Planning lazy on report?
No update. And we aren't lazy on the regional planning, so it's not a lazy on.
Staff announcements?
To just give an update on city council actions, the special, I don't think I've seen you since this happened. The special use permit for the parcel map on Gaslight was denied, so you will not be seeing any more of the parcel map at this time. Medical marijuana, the Stan Medical Marijuana Land Use applications was approved for first reading. Petro Solutions went on appeal last night to city council and city council upheld your recommendation. And Midtown was approved with a second reading yesterday. There were a couple of changes, yes. Just a couple minor changes. Couple minor changes. I can bring you back a full analysis of that, if you'd like. And that's all I have.
Commissioner's suggestion for future agenda items. And I sent you out a note about the PC dates. Anybody have any problems with the PC dates for 2014?
This is an action item, so if you want to vote on it, you need to put it on the next agenda.
Vote on what? On the dates?
If you need a discussion or action on that, we can put it on for a future agenda item.
Okay. Put it on the?
Let's do that.
Yeah. Put it on the future agenda item. Actually, I don't think there's any, I thought they, they were great, but.
Commissioner Reno, I thought we were going to get a, a presentation on the industrial co, you know, areas inside the city. Is that still coming? What's the?
Can we have that tonight?
That starts at 2:30 in the morning, okay? Just stick on a while.
They're on their way.
Is it on the docket?
From Regional?
Yes.
Yes, they're, it's, it's coming up. They're waiting outside.
Might take a while.
Yes, that is, that is coming.
Okay. Public comments. Okay? Did you?
Yes. My name is Lee Gibson. I'm the executive director of the Regional Transportation Commission. I wanted to first convey Amy Cummings' appreciation for her being able, allowed to participate in the workshop on the TOD effort. I know we have a great interest in that project and we just want to thank you all for doing great work. But more importantly, what I want to do is invite you all on December 6th to Transit Connections 2013. This is going to be a summit meeting in which we will be bringing in national experts in public transportation, economic development. We're going to be talking about the relationship of public transit to our community and how we can better perhaps plan our public transit systems, system here to work more closely with your land use process, but also bring greater value to our economic development efforts as well as begin addressing issues with the seniors. This will be held at the Reno Sparks Convention Center and we would love to have every one of you and the staff in the audience. It's free to the public. You can go to www.rtc.com, washoe.com and register for this and we hope you all come out.
Great. Would you send, could you email Michelle so she could?
I had, I had the information. I can send it out.
We, we'll get all the information out to you. But this will be a great event and again, a real opportunity to showcase partnership between the RTC, city of Reno, especially in the Todd Arena. So, thank you.
And transit's free that day, too, isn't it?
Transit will be free that day. That's correct. And that means, that means rapid, so take the rapid.
Good. And could you fill out a form for us, for Michelle, too?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sir, would you like to, since you waited till the end of the meeting?
No, this is my first time to come to any civil affair in the state of Nevada. I participated in Texas and in California, but, so it's, it's more or less just a little research on my part to see how things work.
Okay. Thank you.
I talked to your attorney earlier about Roberts Rules of Order or whatever you use and I see that it's sort of lax, just to comment.
All right. Yeah, it's Nevada, not, not Nevada.
I've only been here two years, so.
Okay. I'm kidding you.
Okay, no problem.
All right.
Is it Moana or Moana?
It's Verde. It's Verde, though. No, I'm there.
Oh, I got Verde.
Okay. And for adjournment? Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn. Thanks.